Thank you, welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. We're gonna start with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance from Brooke Gilbert, 6th grader at Pondcrest School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a very special honor tonight, and for that I'd like to ask if the whole commission could come down? Among us tonight, from the city of Margate, we have Ms. Broward County 2014, Yasina Molina. Come on up. I got this in an email and went, "Margate, yeah, we rock." Congratulations. Let me tell you a little bit about her. She was, on March 22nd, crowned Ms. Broward County 2014. She has a student ad... Had to turn the page. I got a student ad. Florida Atlantic University, thank you. I don't know if we've got some of yours out there. She graduated from Monarch High School. She's looking to obtain a doctorate in medicine. She's gonna be a doctor. Awesome, awesome guess. I'm gonna read you a couple of things that she said, and I'm assuming you had to say these things there? We'll try. "How has the world you come from shaped your dreams and aspirations?" And she said, "My family came from the Dominican Republic to the United States for the same reason everyone else does: opportunity. Since the moment they arrived until present day, they've worked hard to get where they are now. For this reason, I am humbled and driven to accomplish my dreams and aspirations to make them proud. I want to make them feel as if all the obstacles they faced were worth it when I received my doctorate, even by being Ms. Florida, and I can start with paying them for everything they have done for me." Congratulations, parents.
My father's name is Mena, and my father's name is Mala. And I want to thank them for everything they've done for me.
That was just so close in a long time. And I'll guarantee you, this will not get you into the private bathrooms upstairs. However, on behalf of myself and the City Commission, and I'm sure all of Margate, we would like to present you with the key to the city. I want to give you a little hug, a cheer around, and give you a pin you can stick on your jacket. And we will be watching for you for Ms. Florida, right? We will be watching and cheering for you for Ms. Florida. Congratulations, and thanks for making us proud. Absolutely.
And also let's thank our director, Brenda Edwards, and also Anthony.
Awesome. Thank you all. We've got a crowd here, thank you. Pretty impressive, pretty impressive. We've got some great kids in the city of Margate. Got some great parents, too. Okay. Mike Jones is here. Mike's not here. Oh, can you yell for him? Mike. Thought you were getting away with this, didn't you? All right. We are doing a proclamation for National Kids to Parks Day, and there is no better parks director than Mike Jones. Not only is he a Margate resident, he is also has kids. You have a dog, right? You have a dog. But he goes by our parks every day and makes sure everything's good for the kids. So, here's my whereas part. Proclamation. Whereas, May 17th, 2014 is the 4th National Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages family to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead more active lifestyles to combat the issues of child obesity, diabetes, melanosis, hypertension... All right, you guys, this was really not nice. Hold on one second. Hypercholesterolemia. And, oh my God. Whereas, National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Pierman, Mayor of the city of Margate, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2014 as National Kids to Parks Day in the city of Margate, and urge all citizens to make time, May 17th, 2014, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. In witness whereof, I have sat here until you set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of Margate to be affixed this 7th day of May 2014, signed by Mayor Lisa Pierman, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Commissioner Tommy Rosano, and Commissioner Frank B. Talerico. Go to the park. Commissioner Rosano.
Hey, guys, doing tonight?
Good.
Um, tonight we're gonna have our water... Water Top Savers contest winners, and I like to call it ready to cheddar food, from these. Ready's our director from these, and you know, sometimes we take it for granted, when you turn the water on, it's gonna come out automatically. There's a lot to it in that, but ready to explain a little bit, and then we'll...
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. This poster contest is the second year that we are participating in this program, sponsoring it, to educate the kids about the importance of water conservation. As Commissioner just now said, it's very easy to turn on the tap and forget that it's still running, but it takes a lot for that water to come to that point. It's very important to save that water, because it costs a lot to make that water. And to educate that, we have this poster contest, so we can educate the kids, and hopefully when they go to their houses, when the parents are working it all with them for the poster contest, hopefully they get educated, too. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask, um, please to give out the little water fixtures for the Simpson faucets. Do we still have that, Savers?
As part of the conservation program in the city, if you go to the city website, you'll see a program where we participate in the Broward Partnership Program, where the... As part of the city's program, we give out free water closets, which are water-efficient closets that saves water. And also, as part of the program, we give out free showerheads, sink aerators, ethanol fixtures, so there are a lot of incentives that you can get for free from the city. You just need to call 954-972-0828, that's my office number, and we're ready to help you guys. Thank you. I just wanted to explain how the divisions are listed here. The program is based on age, and the divisions are divided based on age. So, Division 1 includes K and 1st graders, Division 2, the 2nd and 3rd graders, Division 3, 4th and 5th graders, and Division 4 and middle schoolers, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. And then we have Division 5, which is special needs kids. So, the schools submitted their winning posters. The schools had their own competition in their schools, and then the schools submitted the winning posters to the city. And the posters that we received were again awarded by the City Commission here to elect the city winners. So, the city winners today are receiving a $75 gift certificate, and the school winners are receiving a $25 gift certificate.
Okay, Division 1. The winner of Division 1 is Landon Shaver. Come on up, Landon.
Well, the water bottle there, the cat blew off, and then water started spraying everywhere, and then the clouds, they saved the water there, and then the three balloon drops by the flower next to the water bottle. So, it's awesome. That red thing right there is making out into that flower, and that water bottle there.
On behalf of the city of Margate, 2014 Drop Savers Poster Contest, Division 1 city winner awarded Landon Shaver. Plus, you got a pin, city pin, officially there. And your $75 American Express gift certificate. And Division 1, school winner, we have Joseph Roden. Come on up, Joseph. How you doing, Joseph? What school are you going to? All right, well, real quick, your pictures?
There is the cloud, and it's raining on the earth with water, and then the clouds are the...
All right, excellent job, nice job. City of Margate, 2014 Drop Savers Poster Contest winner, Division 1 school winner, Joseph Roden, signed by Mayor Lee Pierman, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, and Commissioners Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frank B. Talerico. Congratulations. And you got a $25 American Express gift card. Congratulations. Okay, our next one is Division 1. We have Adrian Alomarres. Come on up, Adrian.
Liberty Elementary.
Okay, do you want to talk to your pictures later?
Okay. The water drops are up there, raining, and then the star.
Beautiful picture. Okay, we have the city of Margate, Adrian Alomarres. I think you're gonna run away with this one, huh? Congratulations, plus we have your pin and your $25 gift certificate. Congratulations. Okay, now, Division 2. City winner for Division 2, Soraya Martin. Name is Soraya. Would you mind telling us where your picture is at?
Those are kids raising letters that says "Help Water," and that's the little rain cloud, and it's raining. And in the cloud, it says "We Still Water," and that's the Super Water Job Man.
You get the plaque, signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commissioners. Congratulations. You get a $75 gift certificate. Next one is Giovanna Baldonado. And Giovanna is the Division 2 school winner. Hey, Giovanna. What school do you go to? Every child, all over here tonight. Okay, so all of your pictures. Very good. Giovanna Baldonado, congratulations, your city pin, and your $25 gift certificate. Congratulations. Division 2, school winner, Mackenzie... Whoa, come on up, Mackenzie. Oh, Mackenzie's at an All-Stars softball game tonight, and she apologizes, but I guess we'll have to recognize her at the next meeting. Is that okay? All right, so you give it to her now, and...
Give it to her now.
Give it to her now? All right, Tom Mackenzie, we said thank you. Here's her plaque, her gift certificate. And you can explain the picture.
She did a wonderful job with her heart-shaped earth and saving water, please.
If she wants to come to the next commission meeting, she can have her picture taken in front of the seal, Commissioner.
Congratulations. Okay, next is Division 3, city winner, Ladenia Solano-Costa.
I love Christian Academy.
Wow, you got the shirt, too. Look at this. Ask your shirt, or just notice. All right, who tells me that picture, or your shirt?
The earth is... They're holding... The kids are holding hands with the water job, and it means for all of us that we need to save water, 'cause it's very important for us, and that we should save the water all the time, because every job counts.
Great city winner, congratulations. Your city pin, your official pin, and your $75 American Express gift certificate. All right, our next winner, school winner, Maria Paula Pollos. Come on up, Maria. How you doing, honey? What school do you work at? Liberty, whoa, how you doing, girl, over there? Okay. It's funny, your picture.
It says that where drops save water preservation to custom routine, um, it has a little bit of explanations why we should save water, and there's a little drop saying, "Be smart during your work."
All right, that's great. A little rules there, I like that. Very nice. Next, City Commission, here's your plaque, here's your city pin, and your $25 American Express gift certificate. Okay, our next school winner is Crystal Simpson. Come on up, Crystal. Margie Elementary, there we go, okay.
Margie just shows a two-fonces running, and it's supposed to mean that we should be saving water and not wasting it.
Here's your plaque, Division 3 school winner, your city Margate pin, and your $25 American Express gift certificate. Is it that? Congratulations, nice job. Division 4 winner, Mary Kayla Rowland. Kayla, congratulations. It's a beautiful picture.
These pictures, uh, it means that we're not supposed to abuse what we have and to take care of what we're on the table.
You're coming to school? Find it life. Beautiful picture. And your city pin, $75 gift certificate.
Miss Ford? Take mercy.
Half the church.
That's half my church. That's my basketball court, four of my students.
God's been good to you.
Yeah.
The fish were going into your rooms, too. That's true. Like, God, you're still with him.
That's right.
It's true.
All right, our final winner from Division 5, we have Patrick Goulart. How you doing, Patrick? What school are you from? What school are you from? Liberty Elementary, I figured, I knew that. Can I explain your picture? Good job, Patrick. All right, on behalf of the City Commission, we got a beautiful plaque here, the City Commissioners, nice, right? You got a pin, and a $75 gift certificate.
Make sure they put it in the collection.
Student of the month, Commissioner Talerico.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening! I want to ask you all a question first, okay? How many of you kids out here, raising hands, know how to swim? Very good, very good. We had a few tragedies in the community. We've had a few tragedies in the community lately. I'm glad to see that our kids are learning how to swim. We have free swimming lessons for toddlers at our, at Calypso Code, so take advantage of that. Good job, guys. All right. Yes, we want to thank the Margate Democratic Club for donating all of the Student of the Month plaques for this month. So thank them. Our fourth student, Sheri Whitehead, fifth grade, Abundant Life Christian Academy. And you all by yourself here? Where was the game? Come on. How to get everybody up here? How you doing? Fifth grade? All right, you have, you have a job to do first. Before you get anything, you have to tell us who all these nice people are.
Well, this beautiful man right here in the blue and black is my mother. And these two, the nice dresses and smiling, are my sisters. And here, right here is my father. And standing behind him is my wonderful principal. And right next to her is my best, best, best teacher.
You should think about running for Commissioner. Watch out, guys. Awesome. All right, Sheri Whitehead. Model's the kind of, the kind of involved student that teachers would love to have filling up their classrooms. She is a goal-oriented and committed student, day in and day out. Sheri is organized and follows through with her work. She listens well and eagerly shares her thoughts in class discussions. Sheri is willing to take the risk of asking questions to check her understanding. She has the confidence to share the love of Christ with others and is not afraid to pray for those in need. Sheri continues to display her willingness to go above and beyond in her efforts to pro- to progress. She sets goals for herself and then works hard to meet her goals. For all of these reasons, academic effort, enthusiasm about learning, and confidence in her faith in Christ, Sheri is deserving of the honor to be Student of the Month. You get this nice pin to wear. You get a plaque to Sheri Whitehead for your outstanding efforts at Abundant Life Christian Academy, signed by the mayor and the commissioners. And, best part. I don't even know what's in here. Do you like to write? Here's a pencil. Do you like firefighters? Good answer. Get a nice shirt for fire rescue. Pretty cool? And I know you really like to write, so here's some more pencils. And, you like the police, right? Here's your badge. And you like the water thing that they have today, so here's a water bottle for you. From who? Who's that? From Dees, right? Well, it's all up there. Two pencils, okay? And, uh, when you get tired of using pencils, we have a nice pen for you. If you get tired of the pen, here's another pencil. And, light from the commission, right? It really works. And, there's more. If you get lost, you can hang this on your back here. You can find it in the dark. This really works nice. Lights up. Here, hold that, will you, please? And, wait a minute. Oh, this is a good one. This is the story of drinking water. And, uh, post-it notes and, and two more pencils. Thanks, ready? Good book? Here you go. There you go. And, do you like to go to Calypso Code? Huh? What is that? Okay? And that's about enough. That's the, the water park in Margate. Have you ever been there? Now you get to go. You have two daily passes for the Calypso Code water park. And you have this bag, this backpack from Dees? No, Public Works, sorry, to put all your stuff in here. Okay. Very good. Oh, there's more. Oh, wait a minute, there's more. Hold on. Hold that, huh? You have a twenty-five-dollar gift card to Walmart from? From Walmart. You like karate? Good. You have black belts, Kenpo Academy, gift certificate for one month of martial arts training, and a free uniform. And, we're getting better on this one, Melissa. Thank you. Instead of just one ice cream cone like McDonald's got, they're, they're open the ante. You have one free Happy Meal and a one free sundae from McDonald's. Thanks, Melissa. Veronica LaRocina. And bring your, bring your fan club with you. Veronica? Hi, Veronica. How you doing? Come on over here, so everybody can see you. No, you gotta stand, you're not Veronica. You're a kid. Come here, come here. Yes, you're the star. I heard the long cheering for you. Can you do me a favor? How old are you?
Seven.
Oh, good.
Uh, that's Miss Reed. And that's my mommy. And that was Shacey, my brother. Cousin. And Angel. And daddy. And Avashen. And Miss Lopez.
All right. Okay. Veronica is an amazing young lady and is new to Atlantic West Elementary this year. She has made great progress and has adjusted well to her new school. You can be sure that Veronica will always try her very best, even when the work is challenging. She is kind and helpful and is a bright light in her classroom every day. Atlantic West Elementary is delighted to introduce Veronica as their Student of the Month. And you get a plaque. Veronica Arieseino for your outstanding efforts at Atlantic West Elementary, student recognition, signed by the mayor and the commissioners. Now, why are you crying? She'd be happy, right?
I'm not happy.
You're not happy? You won an award? You go to school? You gotta do really good in school, okay?
But Miss Kova was, uh, in four weeks, I heard that.
Okay. You'll get an award soon, I'm sure. We're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna give you a pin tonight. Okay? That's for you. We owe you a pin. And, we have, we have a lot of pins. There's a couple on the floor. Here you go. Did you watch, do you want a pin? Yeah? Had to give them a pin too. All right, we're running out of pins. Now, everybody's happy, right? Okay. All right. Okay, this is your bag of goodies. There's all kinds of good stuff in there. Okay? And, you have a Calypso Code certificate. Okay, you have a twenty-five-dollar gift card for Walmart. Yeah, and karate lessons from Kenpo Karate. And, you like McDonald's? Okay, you get a free Happy Meal and one sundae. You guys have this all your own. And, here's your pin. Now, you're all happy, right? Okay. Thank you. You're all done? You get to keep that.
She wanted an Apex card.
Okay. Aharon Randy Randwine. Is Aharon there?
No.
Nope? Okay. He's in Washington. Okay, seventh grade. Okay. Next, we have... Oh, this is our student from last month. Javon?
What's up?
Clear he's not here. Clear he said? You on here? Yes? No? Javon? Javon's not here either.
Okay.
Right? From Liberty Elementary.
What's up?
Right?
Forgiveness using the iPhone right now. Okay, hold on, I'll go look, okay?
Commissioner Razan, come down here. I know you had a request to, uh, do a presentation. It's all yours now.
All right, you have your request tonight, so, uh, thank you, Frank. Uh, to introduce this next person. We became friends with the baseball league and through the, uh, cheerleading. Her, her daughter cheerleaders are my daughter. And, uh, you know, this girl's a little, uh, you know, she's, she's a real, um, she's great, Lexi. I don't have to explain her, she's just a great little girl. So Lexi, come on, Lexi, the overs, buddy. She's here in the lobby of Liberty Elementary. How you doing, Lexi? Congratulations. All right, you want to call some people up with you? Who's your mom and dad? All right, mom and dad, you want to come up? Real quick, this is Coach Ed slash Eric and Coach Chris over there. They just came from practice. Coach, what's your record?
Um, twenty and one.
Twenty and one. They're going to play in the World Series on, uh, Saturday. And I'm glad to say that my son, uh, Michael is, uh, is proud.
Surprised they're on the team.
All right, now it's your turn. Lexi, you ready? Okay, Lexi is a Liberty Star student. She is a role model for other students by being kind, honest, fair, and responsible. Lexi works very hard to achieve excellence and success in school. She's actively involved in Liberty Elementary's news team, going above and beyond her regular responsibilities by keeping her fellow classmates informed of important events that are going on at school. Liberty is proud to honor Lexi as their Student of the Month. Excellent, Lexi. And just real quick, introduce everybody. How many principals here?
That's my mom, that's my brother, that's my dad, that's Mr. Levine, that's Miss Kovan.
All right, congratulations, Lexi. On behalf of the City Commission, here's your pin. Here's your plaque, signed by the, the mayor, vice mayor, the City Commission. So Lexi, the overs, student of the month. And I don't know if you guys know this, but when these children receive their, uh, their award, well, actually, uh, telling, telling them to come to the city, it is a sealed envelope. And from what I was told, she was super excited and I, I, I don't know what it is. I haven't gotten to get one yet for my kids, but, uh, I was told that it made her day and that, you know, this is really a big, big deal for these kids. So, thanks again, Lexi. Principal Levine. And everybody out there, thank you. Oh, oh, wait a second. Okay, you have a twenty-five-dollar gift card from Walmart from, this is from Mount Mariah Apostolic Church, Apostolic Church Incorporated in, uh, Mears Park Lane, Margate. Then there is a black belt karate. Twenty-five-dollar black belt karate from Kenpo Karate Academy in, uh, Margate, West Atlantic Boulevard. And last but not least, your free Happy Meal and your sundae, along with your goodie bag. Congratulations, Lexi.
Katie Sinks. Is Katie here from Liberty Elementary? Fifth grade, right? All right, Katie, turn around here. Let's get all, everyone up here. All right? All right, Katie? Who's not? Oh, we got more to go? All right, wait, we got more? Okay. That's okay. Is there anybody who's not with Katie? You guys too, huh? Anybody else? Okay, you got a big job. Come here. You have to tell us who all these people are.
Uh, this is my mom, my dad, my grandma. This is my brother, my favorite teacher, Mr. Lou. My grandma, um, Blake, my brother's friend. My grandpa, my grandma, my best friend, Natty, and my wonderful friend, my vice principal, Ms. Pashkina.
You use your adjectives well. Okay, Katie is an extremely polite and respectful student. She is always kind to her classmates and treats others the way, excuse me, the other way that she would want to be treated. Katie is upbeat, friendly, courteous, and a great leader. She is very interested in learning the material that is presented and is willing to help others in class. If called to do so, Katie is diligent with her studies and is always working above and beyond what is expected. Liberty Elementary is proud to honor Katie as their Student of the Month. And your plaque, Katie Sinks, for your outstanding efforts at Margie Elementary, signed by the mayor and the City Commission. You got it? Pretty heavy. And, your goodie bag, all kinds of good stuff in there. And, a gift card to Walmart from Mount Mariah Apostolic Church. You've got a Happy Meal from McDonald's, okay? And an ice cream cone. Sundae, sundae, sorry. And from, uh, who's doing this? Oh, Kenpo Karate. You like karate? Good, have fun. All right, excellent. Jeremiah Novotny. Jeremiah, where are you? Jeremiah, oh, there's Jeremiah. All right. Margie Middle. Would you drive here yourself? Close quick, anybody? Huh? Tom, come on up. Come here. Come on up, family. We don't want to think he was all by himself here. You know? Doesn't look. Okay. Tell us who all these nice people are.
This is Veronica, my mom, and my two brothers, Jaden and Jaden.
This is Veronica, my mom, and my two brothers, Jaden and Justin, and my reading teacher, Ms. Hinton, and our principal, Ms. Pilate.
Okay, very good. All right, the Panthers team is proud to nominate Jeremiah as Student of the Month. He is an honorable student and displays an exemplary work ethic. Jeremiah is a positive asset to the learning environment. No matter what the circumstances, he remains courteous and kind. Martya Middle is proud to call him a Spartan and is honored to have Jeremiah as their Student of the Month. Here's your pin, Jeremiah. Plaque to Jeremiah Novotny, right? For your outstanding efforts, Margate Middle, signed by the mayor and the City Commission. And your goodie bag. And your gift card, $25, from Mount Moriah Apostolic Church and Kenpo Academy Karate. And one free Happy Meal and a free sundae from McDonald's. Enjoy. We have a 1st grader from Rise Academy, Julia Do... Nascimento. I know you didn't drive here either. Come on up, guys. Nascimento, is that how you say it? Nascimento. Let's put those glasses on. Okay, come on over here. Tell us who all these nice people are.
This is my dad, this is my sister, Ajay. This is my mom, this is my sister's teacher, Ms. Patrick. This used to be my Spanish teacher, right here. This is my Smithmore Principal, this is, um, my friend's mother. This is my, um, aunt and uncle.
Thought you were gonna say, you don't know who those people are. They just came up here just to get in the picture. Okay. Come on over here. Julia is a deserving candidate for Student of the Month. She always strives to do her best in and out of the classroom. She is very personable and helpful. Julia helps create positive energy that makes learning more enjoyable. No matter what activity is placed in front of her, she's willing to face the challenge head-on. She is a great role model for her peers and is an outstanding choice for Student of the Month. Congratulations. Your plaque, Julia Do Nascimento. Portuguese? I know one word in Portuguese, bom. Bom means good, right? Okay, all right. For your outstanding efforts, Rise Academy School of Science and Technology, signed by the mayor and the City Commissioners. And you get your goodie bag. And you get some certificates. $25 gift card from Mount Moriah Apostolic Church. You have karate lessons and a uniform from Kenpo Karate. And you have one free Happy Meal and one free sundae from McDonald's. You got all that? No? If you need copies of these, they're online on our website, so... And release, your sign releases before you go, right? Okay, and that's all, right? Thank you, Melissa, nice job tonight.
And where were these students, people that were there? Teachers of the Month. In honor of the Happy Teachers Appreciation Week.
Good evening. As a former retired teacher, it's always been a privilege for me to honor our hard-working and dedicated teachers that we have here in the city of Margate. Our first Teacher of the Month is Patricia McNeil, 5th grade, Abundant Life Christian Academy. This past school year, Ms. McNeil moved from teaching kindergarten to teaching the 5th grade. Her students love her. She is a fun and dynamic teacher that uses movement and language to enhance her instruction. She gives the extra mile in training her students to be logical thinkers and even sharpens coordination skills by teaching her students step and African dance. Additionally, her efforts helped the students earn two national trophies at the Christian Schools Festival in March. Her devotion to excellence and diligent work has been admired by many colleagues, and her commitment to the Lord is noticeable in everything she does. It is with excitement that Abundant Life Christian Academy honors Patricia McNeil as her Teacher of the Month. And your City Pinch and your Certificate of Recognition for your outstanding efforts at Abundant Life Christian Academy, signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, and the teachers. And for your goodie bag...
The only one that's signed with the plaque is the mayor. It's not all of the rest of them. Their names are just listed.
We know you liked it, right? So here are your pencils. And a flashlight from the City Commission. A post-it from Dee's Elementary. And an insulated lunch bag from Public Works. Note pads that say, "We take note of great teachers in our city." Margate City Commission. There's also a bookmark in here. And a water bottle. And we also have Margate Recycles from Dee's? Dee's as well. And we have a gift certificate to Rossi Pyrograph Center. Uh, it's one certificate for free spinal examination, including any necessary access. And we also have Black Belt's Kenpo Academy has given you a gift certificate for martial arts training and a free... So when you get done with that, you can go to chiropractor. And for McDonald's, we have one free smoothie for frappe and one free sandwich at McDonald's. And we also have two Clippso Co daily passes as well. And who do you have with you today?
I have one of my students, Sherri Whitehead, and I have beside me my principal, Stacy Hager.
For our next Teacher of the Month, we are honoring Susie Reeves, ASD, K, 4th and 7th grades, Atlanta Quest Elementary. Ms. Reeves is an amazing educator. In her classroom, every student is involved and engaged. She has worked hard to support inclusion of students into the general education program. Each child feels special and loved in her classroom. Ms. Reeves has mentored and supported other teachers who can always be counted on for her smile. It is a great honor that Atlanta Quest honors Ms. Reeves as her Teacher of the Month. And we have your City Pinch and your Certificate of Recognition for your outstanding efforts at Atlanta Quest Elementary, signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, and the teachers. You also have your goodie bag. And a certificate for martial arts. When you get done, you can visit the chiropractor as well.
Exactly.
And then after you go to the chiropractor, you can stop by the McDonald's and get your free smoothie or frappe and your free sandwich every time. And who do you have with you today?
Well, my little one had to go. She was very hungry and baby brother was getting quite anxious. So I have my assistant principal, Mrs. Lewis.
And our next teacher that's being recognized is Boe Ray Pana Scheinberger, kindergarten at Hebrew Academy Community. Would you like to introduce your pair before we start?
I have, um, two, three of my daughters, um, my son, my husband, my principal, and my principal lady.
Mrs. Scheinberger teaches Judaic Studies to kindergarten students. She goes out of her way to help the children feel comfortable, safe, and excited about their first formal education experience in learning Judaism. Anytime that you walk into her class, her students are busy working as a group or in a learning center. Mrs. Scheinberger plans meticulously so that her young students of Judaism learn right at their individual levels. She is directly involved in shaping of a young student's belief system. As Judaic Studies are the heart of her school, Mrs. Scheinberger's role as a kindergarten Judaic Studies teacher cannot be emphasized enough. The Hebrew Academy School is honored to recognize Boya... Autumn? Mormon, sorry. Scheinberger as her Teacher of the Month. And we have your City Pinch and your Certificate of Recognition for outstanding efforts at Hebrew Academy Community School. Teacher recognition, signed by the mayor and the teachers. And your goodie bag as well. Your, our practical exam. And your body school and also McDonald's. And our next teacher is Lourdes Rivera Whaling, Reading Specialist at Liberty Elementary. And I'll let you introduce who you have with you today, please.
We have Jill Collin, our media specialist at Liberty, and our principal, Mr. David Levitt.
Mrs. Rivera, Walling, Whaling, I'm sorry. Implement various reading programs for her students as well as rewarding students for reading success. She provides opportunities for parents to be involved in their child's education through evening events such as Lursey Night and Barnes &amp; Noble Reading Night. In addition, Mrs. Rivera Whaling continually cooperates with her fellow faculty and staff members to ensure all resources and strategies are available to help her students. Liberty Elementary is pleased to honor Mrs. Whaling as her Teacher of the Month. And your City Pinch. And your Certificate of Recognition for your outstanding efforts at Liberty Elementary, signed by the mayor and the teachers. And we also have your goodie bag, your chiropractic visit, your karate visit, and your McDonald's visit. Congratulations. Tira Delu, 5th grade. Mrs. Delu demonstrates her love and dedication for her students in everything she does. She goes above and beyond to enhance her students' intellectual development and personal growth. Mrs. Delu's classroom is one in which all students are actively involved in the learning process. Through the use of challenging and exciting activities, her students love coming to school each day. From the moment you walk into her classroom, you can immediately feel the amazing learning environment. And you can see why her students, fellow faculty members, and parents are delighted. Mrs. Delu makes learning fun, and you can see the excitement on the faces of our students. Mrs. Delu makes learning fun, and you can see the excitement on the faces of our 5th grade students all the time. The Margate Elementary family would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Delu on being their teacher of the month for a job in a month. And we have your certificate and your certificate of recognition for outstanding efforts at Margate Elementary, teacher recognition, signed by the mayor and the commissioners. And your potty bag as well. And we'll let you go to McDonald's first, and then work off at the karate school, and they get your back adjusted at the chiropractor. And our next teacher of the month, Kelly Henson, 7th grade, Margate Middle School. And Mrs. Henson, if you could tell us who you brought with you today?
This is Jeremiah, one of my top students and also student of mine, and this is my AP, Mrs. Kullen.
Jeremiah will give you the special privilege of reading what you wrote about your teacher. So if you want to come and read.
I chose Mrs. Henson because she is nice, fun, kind, and I feel she's a great teacher. Enthusiasm has motivated me to accept when I just want to give up. Mrs. Henson takes the time to explain the things, so I clearly understand. I'm glad to have her as a teacher.
And we have your certificate of recognition for outstanding efforts at Margate Middle School, recognition signed by the mayor and the commissioners. Congratulations very well. And we have your potty bag, as well as your chiropractic visit, and your karate visit, and your McDonald's. And our next teacher of the month being honored is Crystal Fitzpatrick, kindergarten, Ross Academy. And we have let you introduce who you have as our...
Okay, I have Mrs. Audrey, one of my current students. This is Julia, one of my students from last year. This is Gara, my sister principal, and this is my principal, and my husband, Sean.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick goes the extra mile to ensure that every student is successful, no matter what. She has the ability to work effectively with administrators, other teachers, and parents for the good of her students. Mrs. Fitzpatrick never gives up on a student, and she continually tries new strategies, understanding that eventually some will work. She creates lessons that are fun, fresh, and energetic. Her goal is that her students walk out of her classroom every day looking forward to the next. Ross Academy is honored to acknowledge Mrs. Fitzpatrick as her teacher of the month. And we have your certificate and your certificate of recognition for outstanding efforts at Ross Academy School of Science and Technology, signed by the mayor and the commissioners. And your potty bag, and your chiropractic visit, your karate visit, and McDonald's.
Okay, we're gonna take a 10-minute break so that the kids can go home and study for class tomorrow, and the teachers can go home and grade papers, and thank you for your patience. It was a long first part of the meeting. We have another long second part of the meeting, so we'll take a 10-minute break.
I got your good side there. The good side.
It is recording.
It's okay. I'm not doing anything.
Nothing, yeah, nothing wild.
Happy Frank.
What is it, Joe?
Come here, come on, I wanted to talk to you.
Talk to me, Joe.
Why can't we have an award presented just to old-school students?
I don't care about it, Joe. We spend over half our time presentation of the day.
All your constituents left watching. You show up now after all, you're gone.
They say nothing in the whole...
Where's Poppy? I'm right here.
He does the technology, he's nice.
I know, too. Talk to him when he walks outside.
You've got no pants on, what happened?
I got a little pencil. Oh, God. Hold on.
Come on, Cookie. Cookie! Did you see what he did? I was here earlier today. I was pulled, built from muscle, to the third floor. So the little girl was off. My big piece of stretch, I'm just a toe, always on the move. Filtered, it's a long, thick, long... Wait a minute, where have you been? Come here, come here. What's, what's changed? You got a new, uh... How's mom and dad? You're still married? You. How long? How long? That long? And don't say your mother's father's. You tell me, what's on your schedule?
They love the idea. They checked it.
Mike Jones. Do you know where Gillette so cold is?
She doesn't know. She says she's there, uh, from, uh... She's there, say she's there from four, from four to six. They may have another test, but I don't think she's ready.
What's your daughter?
No, she's, she's not home. Yeah, I got, uh, I'm, I'm so excited for that.
What'd you get?
Welcome back to the second half. Proclamations.
It was nice to see you.
National Salvation Army Week, Vice Mayor Simone.
Democratic Club, thank God.
Now, I switched it.
And we have Jean Lawyer from the Salvation Army to accept the proclamation this evening. Proclamation. Whereas the Salvation Army, and even Dela, part of a universal Christian church established in 1865, has been supporting those in need in his name without discrimination in the United States for almost 150 years. And whereas nearly 30 million Americans receive assistance from the Salvation Army each year through a broad array of social services, including food for the hungry, relief for disaster victims, assistance for the disabled, outreach to the elderly and ill, shelter to the homeless, opportunities for the underprivileged children and adult addiction counseling and rehabilitation. And whereas the Salvation Army serves 5,000 communities nationwide, including Broward County, where it has been since 1926. And whereas in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower established National Salvation Army Week as a reminder for Americans to give freely of themselves. And whereas for the last 61 years, the Salvation Army has recognized this week as an opportunity to show appreciation for the 3 million volunteers who give of themselves to the Salvation Army each year. That is 8,000 volunteers daily doing the most good. Now therefore, Lisa Pierman, Mayor of the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim, May 12th through May 18th, 2014, as National Salvation Army Week in the City of Margate and throughout the United States. The Salvation Army, its volunteers, donors, program beneficiaries, and supporters will be celebrating the 61st Annual National Salvation Army Week. And witness thereof, Lisa Pierman. Hereon to set her hand and cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the 7th day of May, 2014. Signed by Lisa Pierman, Mayor.
Thank you very much. They say I don't look at day over 100, so. The Salvation Army is 149 years old. We've been in the United States 134 years. 88 years in Broward County. Started in the less fortunate, uh, on emergency basis. 50 years we've had an adult rehabilitation center. Where I work, a long-term rehabilitation, helping those, uh, suffering from addiction issues. We've had a family store right down the street at Atlantic and 441 for going on close to 30 years. And we have five other family stores throughout the county. This is an opportunity for us to say thank you to the governments here in Broward County, to the mayor, the vice mayor, the commissioners, the city staff, as well as the public for all your support. Thank you so much, and God bless you all.
National Police Week, Commissioner Donahue.
Proclamation. Whereas, the Margate Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms on the cities, uh, on the city residents. And whereas it is important for our residents to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies and its members. And whereas, members of the Margate Police Department recognize their duty to serve and by safeguarding life and property, by protecting the people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the United States Congress and President have designated May 13th, 2014 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And during the week of May 11th through 17th as National Police Week. And whereas, the men and women of the City of Margate unceasingly provide a vital police service. And whereas, the appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all may join in commemorating past and present law enforcement officers who have served their communities by faithful devotion to their responsibilities and in doing so have established a reputation of preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. Now therefore, Lisa Pierman, Mayor of the City of Margate, call upon all residents of the City of Margate and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2014 as National Police Week in the City of Margate. And call upon all residents and community members of the City of Margate to observe Tuesday, May 13th, 2014 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. In witness thereof, uh, I, uh, the mayor has here to set her hand to cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the 7th day of May, 2014. Signed by Lisa Pierman, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. Uh, I'm accepting this on behalf of our department. And as I'm sure we all know, this is when we recognize nationwide all of our fallen officers. Uh, last week, we, here in Broward County, we recognized our fallen officers as we do every year. They did in Tallahassee over the weekend. And there's also a national memorial service every year at Washington DC. If you haven't had a chance to go to Washington and see the law memorial, it's something to see. But thank you very much.
Emergency Medical Service Week, Commissioner Donahue. Here's a short video. Maybe. Let it go off schedule. You gotta love the internet, huh?
It's thinking. It's taking the brain.
We could watch this at home, too, right?
Press the button.
A virus is now loading into this city's computers.
We tried. Go ahead. Just kill it.
Edwards, please come on. Gotta tell you one thing. We have the best in this city, the best fire, the best rescue, the best police. We are privileged and honored by the best quality. Proclamation. Whereas, emergency medical service is a vital public service. And whereas, emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas, the firefighters, paramedics of Margate Coconut Creek Fire Rescue engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, the residents and visitors of Margate benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals. And whereas, Margate Coconut Creek Fire Rescue has served the citizens of Margate through medical rescue, firefighting, fire prevention, injury prevention, and CPR training for several decades. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Therefore, Mayor Lisa Pierman, the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2014 as Emergency Medical Service Week. And the City of Margate urges all citizens to support the fire rescue team. In witness thereof, the mayor have hereon to set her hand to cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed the 7th day of May, 2014. Signed, Lisa Pierman, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Certainly, again, it's my honor to be up here representing all the men and women of the organization. As you started to see on the video, uh, the great job they do. And certainly EMS work is, is the bulk of what we do. And again, they do a great job out there every day. And just as a side note, the ALS team, which you've had up here before, the last two events they've been in, they placed first, so they're still on their streak.
Commissioner Kamens, Commissioner Tellerickel.
Yes, thank you. A couple things. First of all, uh, we had our strategic planning meeting a few, a week or so ago. I saw the program about teaching the little kids how to swim. And they were really, it was a good crowd. And we're drawing more people in. And I know Lex is gonna be giving us some information in the future about that. But I just wanna thank you for your, for the good job you guys have done over there and getting the word out to the citizens. Because, uh, if two more kids drown in Broward County, we lead the nation in drowning deaths. It's a lousy statistic as far as I'm concerned. So we can save a few lives, I mean. God bless us. So, uh, keep up the good work. And I went to the, uh, I know Chris was on. We attended the National Day of Prayer at Margate Elementary School. They had a great crowd there. That was a nice event. And, uh, Commissioner, uh, Mayor Pierman. Uh, are we doing anything next to you, or should we wait?
Are we doing anything for what? For Jean, why? Is there any reason?
Well, we wanna all wish Jean a happy birthday today. Jean is the dreadful age of what, 45? 65. I don't know who our singer here is, but if you wanna, if you wanna sing happy, please sing happy birthday.
You can start. You might be able to tell me. Is somebody in the audience to jump in?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jean. Happy birthday to you. Birthday money that should accumulate over the years, we're probably gonna buy a new Lexus. About two for one? No. Uh, nothing else, thank you.
Commissioner Donahue.
I'll be brief because of the longer gender we have. Um, mostly I just wanna say to all those mothers out there, Happy Mother's Day.
Very nice.
Commissioner is on.
Good evening, everybody, how are you? Jean, again, happy birthday. Um, last Saturday, Spider-Man was rained out down at the Margate Sports Complex. I don't know if you guys ever been down there for the movie, but it is incredible. We went to the last one, I think it was Out Frozen. And it was excellent. So Spider-Man has been, uh, changed, I think, to May 31st, is it? Okay, May 31st at 8:00 PM. So if you guys haven't been there, I recommend you go out there and check it out. It's a free movie, it's great. Congratulations, I wanna congratulate to our, uh, our Margate Soccer League, our, um, Men's U-19 League for winning the Florida President's Cup. The Men's U, uh, or, I'm not sure if it's the Men's, but it's the U-15, who had two teams go to the state cup. And also the U-15 five versus five team, but also won the championship. Uh, I talked to, you know, I've been involved with the, uh, the, the baseball and the soccer now and a lot of sports in Margate. And I wanna say that, you know, you guys, Parks and Rec, you do a great job. I know that there was a, you guys handled something today where... I know that the fields down at the soccer field, they get a lot of abuse, so we have to close them down. But you guys made the little exception today, and appreciate that with the travel team, so I appreciate that. Let me see what else I have here. Frank, I went to the National Medical Prayer, that was awesome. Um, it's nice to be in a room where everybody's there for the same reason, on a positive note. I mean, it was really a positive feeling. All right, real quick, I just wanna say, uh, I spent a lot of time down at the Margate Sports Complex with my son's baseball, and I'm sure you guys are sticking here and that, but, um, I'm proud of it. Um, there is a piece of property in front of the property. And I would like to talk about it more at the Margate CRA meeting. But I think it's an ideal piece of property that we can utilize. And we can use it. I, I talked to staff about it, and hopefully they'll recommend something. But I think that if we do the right... But I think that if we do the right thing with this project, we can really put Margate on a local map. Meaning, put in two or one covered AstroTurf field. I know our soccer needs more fields, our youth baseball needs more fields. And I think something like this would be a great marketing tool for the City of Margate. Not only that, but we might be able to get, and soccer's becoming big down in South Florida. We might be able to grab a Northern team to come down here and practice to pick up some of that, you know, some revenue. But I definitely feel that with that piece of property done right, we could even do our Sounds of Sundown, our movies, our once-a-year, what was that, like a little flea market we had? But the ideas are endless. You know, a covered stadium? I know a lot of people that play in baseball in Margate, some of them are leaving to go to other cities because they're offering new fields and something like that. We can't have these people leave. We gotta keep these people here. And I think something like this would be a great selling point to keeping people here and actually bringing in more people. So I've talked to staff about it, and I've talked to the city manager. Hopefully, you know, we can all get on board with this or some sort of an idea. And I have actually here a little piece of information I would like to share. It's a picture of an actual existing sports complex. It just has a sheet metal roof, AstroTurf field. But the uses are endless, and I think it'd be a great branding tool for the City of Margate. You know, we're looking to do something. It's in the CRA district. And like I said, I'll talk about it more on Wednesday night. But I really think that it's something that could put us on the map. Thank you.
Vice Commissioner Simone.
Good evening. I know it's a long evening. Unfortunately, I have a lot under my Commissioner comments tonight. So I apologize for that. Several months ago, we passed a pet ordinance banning the retail sale of dogs and cats in the City of Margate, which is an excellent ordinance. However, it has come to my attention that we do have a loophole in the ordinance. In the ordinance, we have the exception of hobby breeders. With the consensus of the commission, I would like to change that ordinance or amend that ordinance to take out the exception of hobby breeders. The reason why it's a loophole is because of Congress laws, a hobby breeder cannot be regulated in another state. And a hobby breeder can come to, somebody can open up a store in Margate and say, "We're a hobby breeder in Washington." And they can, and we have no proof that they are or are not a hobby breeder. And they, and because of Congress laws, we have to accept their dogs. So that's a loophole. So I would like to close that loophole. This actually helps the hobby breeders in our city because this is only that they cannot sell to pet stores. They can go ahead and sell to the private sector like they do now. And a hobby breeder will not sell normally to a pet store. So if I could get...
Do you have a consensus to add, put on the agenda to change it?
Yes, please.
Do we have a consensus?
Yeah, I discussed that. We can certainly do that. I'll draft that up, and we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Something else, I would like to see if I could also get a consensus to change the code for our grand opening signs to allow them to be in the swale if a five-foot setback is not possible. I know we had a business in Margate that did have a five-foot setback. The staff did a great job at trying to find a place for the grand opening sign. But however, the only place where that sign was in between two trees. And the business owner had paid for two sides, and the second side could not be seen. So I would like to see if we can place them in the swale. And I know in doing so, we may need to go more vertical on the signs when they're built than horizontal like they are now.
So you want consensus to bring back that code as worked out?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Ozawa?
Sure.
Okay. So have it come back with, probably have to work with her then?
Yeah, I will. And with the planning director.
Okay. Edit?
Okay. I'd also like to get consensus to put a banner on firefighter spence to advertise volleyball and pickleball. I understand that we do have an exception, the city does have an exception to do this. So I might like to get consensus from the commission.
I thought we did that last month. Apparently, we didn't.
No, it's my understanding that we did not. We asked the city to look into it.
Okay. Consensus?
If we have an exception, my case of doing, lobbying. But if we have an exception, is that, we have an exception?
Yes, we do.
So if we have an exception?
I was told to bring it to the commission.
Okay. I'm just confused.
Yeah, consensus.
Okay.
Do we have a consensus for the banner on the firefighter park for the advertisement of volleyball and pickleball?
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, you got that? Okay.
Okay, thank you. I went to give an update on the legislative session on the e-cigarettes, which I know was a concern for some residents. The current tobacco law was amended to include e-cigarettes. So the sale of e-cigarettes to minors is a violation. And the bill concerning the sober homes did fail. That was the other legislative update that was of concern to the city. I attended a technology workshop and the Coconut Creek Innovation Zone meeting. And it was interesting because it kind of paralleled each other. At the technology workshop, they talked about 3D printers and the use of them. And actually, Coconut Creek, Margate Middle, I'm sorry, is purchasing one of these 3D printers that's going to be used in their STEM program. Coconut Creek High, as discussed at the Coconut Creek Innovation Zone, has a new program for ninth graders. It's a program that's gonna mirror some of the programs from Atlantic Technical Center. And they also have an interesting program that's starting. It's called the Collegiate Academy with a partnership with University of Florida. Students will graduate with 70 to 90 college credits as they will be taking University of Florida courses. Students will be matched with a University of Florida mentor. And a grant will be available, which will pay for students' tuition and textbooks. It's going to be open initially to 20 to 25 students. So that's a good thing for Coconut Creek High School to pair up with the University of Florida. I'm sorry that I missed the National Day of Prayer. I was at an elected officials workshop. I'm looking forward to this being an annual event in the City of Margate. Anytime that we can come together as one, all houses of worship, residents and city staff, and pray as a community, is an event to embrace. We are a hometown that seeks to help others whenever and wherever we can. I got a memo on J.M. Lexus that they were the world leader in car sales for 22 years in a row. So congratulations to J.M. Lexus on a job well done. I don't think that, when a job is well done, that we can give too many congratulations to them. Happy Birthday to Jean, and also Happy Birthday to my mother. And Happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Very good. Very good. Very good.
Well, it's always nice to go after Vice Mayor. It doesn't leave me anything you have to say. I'm gonna acknowledge retired Commissioner Joseph Larson sitting in the back of the room.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Also want to acknowledge that this is, see, I had this hidden so I could have something to say. Municipal's Clerk Week is this week. And we'd like to thank our city clerk and his team for all the things that you guys do for us. And we appreciate you, and I hope you enjoy your lunch tomorrow. And we bought them lunch, just so you guys know. We bought them lunch for tomorrow. You're welcome. I'll collect for me later. I'll collect for you later. Happy Birthday, Jean. Yeah, the conference we went to, the classes we went to was an extremely intense classes. And I wanna congratulate Commissioner Donahue and Vice Mayor Simone for going through it. I learned things I didn't even know were possible. But one of the, probably the best part of the whole thing was there was a teacher from over at, from Tampa. He was a professor in city government who absolutely positively raved about Doug and Adam. And we couldn't have been prouder to have heard those kind words from them and telling us we were in good hands. And we went through a long, and when I say long, I mean a long session on the comprehensive plan. And now we have it on our iPad, so we will pay more attention to it now. I think that's it. City Attorney, everything? And then Happy Birthday?
No.
City clerk?
I just think it's an honor and privilege to work for this mission. So thank you for honoring myself and my staff for this work for me. Happy Birthday.
Okay. Public discussion.
Hi there. Teresa DeCristophero, 6600 Randy Wood Drive South, Margate.
Joyce Swains Bryant, 7005 Northwest 73.
We are here representing Relay for Life to give you kind of a heads up on how the event went. A lot of people showed up, and we had a great time. Our goal actually was to raise 67,000. We surpassed that goal. And after expenses, we still surpassed that goal. And we really had a great time doing it. I wanted to thank some of the area restaurants that donated to our Survivor's Dinner. Beijing Express, Jasmine Thai, Bella Cucino, Lucky's, El Recreio Bakery, La Bamba, Saigon Cuisine, Penn Dutch especially, and Walmart. They all contributed food for our Survivor's Dinner. We have some certificates to give out for some of our teams that did not come to the closing party. You missed a good party.
Teresa, would you guys like to do that at a commission meeting? Or do you wanna?
I would, I figured we would just do it.
Okay.
Now, this is fine. I'm sorry to take so much time. I just wanted to make sure this was done. Our first, okay. Our first team is Liberty Elementary. Thank you very much. Your team was outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It may be in the fundraising chair, really easy. Our next team are the wonderful Margate Moonwalkers. Carol and Joe and the whole team here. You guys did such a phenomenal job. Thank you so much. And... And our final certificate goes to the team of Jerry's Kids. And we have officially, the team has officially handed everything over. Everything was kind of based in Coconut Creek this year. And we're hoping that we get a solid team from Margate to bring more of a Margate, more of a Margate team's presence to the event for next year. So let's look for a good team for that. Thank you guys so much.
I'm representing our Margate's microgroup. I just wanted to thank everyone as a founding member. Commissioner Ozawa Kane, Tarrigo, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Simone is one of our members now. We thank you for participating. We're sorry we were not there. It was a great event for those who came out and were saying, "Thank you, God." We had no idea we were going to have so many. We had 300 programs printed, and they were all gone before the event started. So thank you again, the City of Margate. You did fantastic job. And we look forward to doing more with MICA because we are here to help the community, the children, the veterans, and also the families. So thank you again, City of Margate.
I'm sorry, guys, there's one more. And the last certificate is to the Margate Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Rick Riccardi, 4829 South Hillingway Circle. As president of the Chamber of Commerce. I was just struck by that piece of property we were talking about, Tom, about what you were doing there. And I've been thinking since we're gonna redevelop downtown, there'll be no big field for us to do things on, particularly the carnivals and things like that. But there is one piece of property that is for sale that's as big as that, and that's the piece of property on Copens and Bank's River that's right next to Odonish. And that piece of property is for sale. And that's a pretty big piece of property. And I just wondered, you know, if we're looking to do something in the future about having open fields, that, you know, I don't know if anybody's talked to anybody about that. But I've been trying to get ahold of the people to see what they want for it. But I don't know if that fits into anything. But I certainly think that that's gonna be something we're gonna lose that, you know, we're gaining a lot, but if that piece is available, maybe we should consider it. And the other thing is that Senate bill did get crushed, and that's a good thing for us. The legislative piece for sober houses did pass and go all the way through, but it won't get Senate support. So we'll be back on the drawing boards for next year with sober houses. So thank you for following that.
Great, quick question. How was your health, Adam?
We had a lot of fun. And I think, I think we raised the same amount as we did last year. $26,000, it looks like. So, but we really had a good time. It was a great day. Thank you for asking that.
Good evening, everyone. Andy Christopher, 6600 Randy Wood Drive South. Tonight, I come before you as my wife and I have been asked to be the co-chairs of the team retention and team building for Strides Against Breast Cancer. This event will be taking place on October 11th this year in High School Park. And we would love to have the opportunity to have Margate be represented as another one of our teams. If that's something possible that we can do, please let us know. We'd be glad to help you with anything that we possibly can. This year, we're looking to raise $1 million and $1 penny. We've got the pennies so far. We're gonna have about 400 teams and over 20,000 walkers. If there is a team or a bunch of teams that would like to get involved, please have them give me a call or my wife Teresa. Thank you very much for your time.
Honey, would you drop any of that information off at the city clerk's office so that we have it so that it can go around to people or to HR, and they can send it around to people?
Absolutely.
We'll get it to different people and see if people wanna join in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Scott Yardley, 5948 Winfield Boulevard. Our city elections are based upon seats. But those seats really don't designate any real area. Each pick a seat, and we vote at large. Although there are various areas in the city represented by different cultures, different interests. For you, for to be a representative of government of different areas, which I, actually, we're not because it hasn't been designated. But there are areas that need to be represented, represented. And the city does boast that it wants to bring in a culture diversity into the city. And if we have areas that are more, larger... And if we have areas that are more, larger percent of ethnic than others, it seems to me that if we have an opportunity for them to, to elect a representative, that we would embrace it. Now, South Margate is an area that has a larger percentage of net ethnic, I'm sorry, of ethnicity. Now, if we were voting by seat, that was based upon an area, and those people in that area would more likely have represented for them.
Your father wants to change the districts.
You see, minority by definition is a minority. That's just kind of logically follows, right? So if you have, you want somebody who wants, you want somebody to represent you in South Margate, but the voting's at large, they're lost in the wash. Because they are a minority, their representation is washed out. It works well for those in seat to keep their office, but it works totally against representing a region, a seat, a culture, an interest. I challenge this city to fall in harmony with what they say is their goals, to bring in a diversity of culture, a inclusiveness to the council, and to bring into our city a election that is based upon seat and voted in by seat. Thank you for your time.
Tony Sivano, 3194 West Paradise Drive, Margate. I came here tonight to thank the Chief of Police, Botson, and the Margate Police Department for including Coral Bay in a pilot program this last weekend for Smart Water. The representative, Anthony Cariccia, excellent representative of the city, came to us with Crime Prevention Unit and gave us the opportunity. We jumped on it. People from Crime Watchers came out to us and Smart Water, and we were given a hundred bottles of this new liquid to work with and we used up all of it. We had four hours and then five minutes before the event was done, the last person took the last bottle. So Coral Bay is very thankful and really appreciates the police department looking out for us all the time. On the flip side, unfortunately, the following day I had to call the police department because something was going on at one of our parks, and I was really dismayed at being transferred to the new dispatch system. It really took away the feeling of being in a small town and just being shut away. I know we have the same quality of police, but it's nice to be able to talk to someone local and say, "You know, the place overall, 441 by sample." And I actually reported that I was a hold too long and just let it go. So I would like the city, it's certainly possible to get back to a local dispatch to consider it. But again, the police department's fantastic. They treated us excellent and all representatives made the city shine. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if, if a gentleman would be so kind to give me the date and the time that he called and he had that issue with communication, I'd lay my respect to have that information so we could check into that issue because the call would have been routed right next door to the City of Coconut Creek, which is where regional communications is at, very local.
Okay. Commissioner Rosado.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, you guys are the pioneers of the Smart Water. Am I correct? You guys are the first in?
As far as I know, we were chosen as pilot.
Yeah, in case the people out there don't know, it's actually a bottle of water, if I'm not mistaken. You can put it on your personal products, and if they're stolen or lost or whatever, it's, they're identifiable and you can't see it, so. I'm sure the chief knows more about it than anybody, but I mean, it's a great program and I think it's a, I think it's going to work really well.
Cindy King, 2111 Northwest 76 Avenue, Margate. I had the unfortunate time of suffering a heart attack, rushed into hospital, and actually I was found that nobody wanted me up there and nobody wanted me down there, so they said, "Your Margate's got to suffer you." So I'm back. But tonight, I would like to say a big thank you for the messages that I got from, I got from the mayor, the, all kinds of people, including our Hollywood movie-style Chief of Police. And the people in hospital, they, they couldn't get over this and said, "Margate, Margate." I said, "Well, this is something that we're Margate City, but this proved that, you know, in the old days, there was what was called Small Town USA, and it was held up to the world that that was the place to live. It was the place." And I think that Margate showed that we are Small Town USA with a heart. And I'm proud to be a member of this city. And for the general public, I can only tell you is, this is what you call results count, and I thank you very much. And by the way, we have been closed for last week, but the Lions Club will be open next week and we're decorated. So if anybody wants to paint, come on down. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Rich Papalovick, 6066 Winfield Boulevard. I'd say that two hours of presentation before the meeting are really out of control. Two hours. This is supposed to be a government meeting, supposed to start at seven o'clock, and we have two hours of giving away hukunaki. And, and I think that if you guys want to do all that, you ought to do it.
On your time.
Some other time, instead of before government meetings. We come here for a government meeting and, oh, give me more. The kids love it. They're happier to take up your words. They love it, but it has nothing to do with government. Absolutely nothing. I'd also like to say that the Salvation Army receiving their word tonight is probably the best word I've ever seen out of, on his dice for the last twenty-five years I've been coming here. And I love the Salvation Army. The only group that provides anything better than cost-wise is the organization I belong to, the St. Vincent's Temple Society. But the Salvation Army's costs, I think, are very, really low. I think they spend ninety-four percent of whatever they get, one of what they deserve. So I'd recommend that anybody who gives a united way or any W organization like that, don't give it because they don't give to organizations that you may not like and do all kinds of wrackings and spend bootles of money administrative costs. It's totally ridiculous. I'd also like to say that I heard comments from the beauty gallery up here about K. Stevens Park and about how wonderful, you know, the people that they saw, you know, they go to see K. Stevens Park, and how good it's been. I think half done or whatever. They can't, you guys can't make up your mind, but there wasn't a barrage of people going here. It'd be ridiculous to come up here and say stupid things like that. Then they go sit on their benches for any period of time. But they do look at the back of everybody's houses. Really, isn't that wonderful thing? So she got the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars back from not losing it to the bike dream that he's had. I hope that you reconsider putting that back in the trust fund, recreational trust fund where it originally came from and using it to put the bridge at the end of Winfield Park. So we can go, Winfield, so we can go to Firefighters Park and use it without having to use it in the traffic. He's got the money sitting there, it's available and cost-effective. And I want you to take that money and use it for something practical. The hundred and seventy thousand dollars they were spending on K. Stevens Park is an abomination for that sidewalk and, and a little grass and stuff.
You're out of time.
I know you haven't, and I wish I had a few more because I'd love to give to you a bit more.
What's the consent agenda, Margate?
And I'll just be reading the resolutions, usual. The resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving utility easement for maintenance of water and sewer facilities at 400 North State Road 7, providing effective date. The resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving a temporary access and construction easement for water and sewer facilities at 400 North State Road 7, providing effective date. The resolution of the City, Commissioner of the City of Margate, Florida approving purchase of specialized aerial ladder rope rescue equipment in and out not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars from Ten Eight Fire Equipment Company utilizing the Lake County contract. The resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving waiving the bidding for the sole source purchase of replacement parts for the telemetry system from Data Flow Systems, Inc., in and out not to exceed thirty thousand dollars to the Department of Environmental and Engineering Services, providing for cost of shipping. The resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving a memorandum of understanding amendment number one with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, for participation in the regional law enforcement exchange system are legs. A resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving 2014 amendment to the interlocal agreement between Broward County and Margate, excuse me, and Margate, providing for division and distribution of the proceeds of the local option gas tax imposed by Broward County Local Option Gas Tax Ordinance, the 2014 amendment to the interlocal agreement between Broward County and the City of Margate, providing for division and distribution of the proceeds from the Broward County Additional Local Option Gas Tax on Motor Fuel Ordinance, and 2004 amendment to the interlocal agreement between Broward County and Margate, providing for division and distribution of the proceeds from the Broward County Fifth Center Additional Local Option Gas Taxes on, to the gas tax on motor fuel for the transit, providing for updated population of figures.
What's the wish of the commission?
It's all open.
Second.
Calorow?
Commissioner Talariqo, aye. Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Yes. City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. To go ahead, I have only one announcement, and I ask that you give me an opportunity to do that at this time. The individual that I'm going to present to you tonight, I would ask to please stand after I make the announcement on this individual. I'm proud to announce the appointment of Mary Beasley as the Finance Director for the City of Margate, effective May 5th of 2014. Ms. Beasley brings to the City of Margate eighteen years of experience in municipal government, most recently as Controller Utility Accounts Manager since 2010 for the city plantation, with prior experience as the Financial Systems Manager, Assistant Finance Director, Treasury Manager, and Internal Auditor for the City of Sunrise for nine years. Prior to that, she worked as an Assistant Internal Auditor for the City of Poplar Beach for five years. Ms. Beasley is a certified public accountant with both a B8 degree in accounting management and a master's degree in taxation. Ms. Beasley is joining Ms. Kelly Dion, our city's current Assistant Finance Director, providing an impressive and dynamic team to lead the City of Margate Finance Department into the future. Ms. Beasley, if you'd please stand and be recognized. And as you all know, our Finance Director, President, Ms. Gil Gargano, will be retiring at the end of the month after thirty-three years, and Gil, lucky you to be standing and recognized as well. Thank you very much, Commissioner. That's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Gil, you're going to teach her how to find that five hundred thousand dollars, right? Thank you. Welcome, and, and we look forward, we'll leave you alone for a little while, but we look forward to having you with us. All right, resolutions.
Item A, a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida approving donation of seven hundred thousand dollars to a child who's missing, ACM, a nonprofit organization, support the, their efforts to continually assist law enforcement in the disappearance of a child and to provide in-house training for police personnel, donation to be funded from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
And what's the wish of the commission?
It's all open.
Second. Discussion? Public? Calorow?
Commissioner Talariqo? Aye. Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Riquelno?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. B, a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida declaring city property surplus, an early agreement between the City of Carl Springs and the City of Margate for the transfer of ownership of equipment and equipment shelter.
What's the wish of the commission?
It's all open.
Discussion? Public? Calorow?
Commissioner Talariqo? Aye. Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Item C, a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida awarding bid number 2014-006 Asphalt Rejuvenation to Pavement Technology, Inc., in and out not to exceed seventy-eight cents per square yard for the Department of Public Works.
What's the wish of the commission?
It's all open.
Second. Discussion? Public?
Rich Papalovick, 6066 Winfield Boulevard. It says asphalt rejuvenation. Is this paid for the property lot up front? Is that what this is called? What's this called?
City Manager, you want to answer?
Sam, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Public Works Director can answer that. This is the item.
Sam Lake, Public Works. Asphalt rejuvenation is a process that places asphalt teams and maltines back into the asphalt that rejuvenates the asphalt. Those asphalt teams and maltines were lost due to weatherization of the asphalt, so this basically adds them back in there to keep the asphalt from, from getting real.
Is that city project? Do these happen all over in every part?
Yes, that's going on everywhere. We've been doing this, this is the fifth year of our project we've been doing, is an ongoing process to basically maintain our asphalt.
I'm glad I got the answers because I was, sure, it's okay, thank you. I appreciate that you gave me the answer. And I've had this done on Winfield Boulevard a few times and whatever, didn't stop letting the cracks from coming back because it's still cracked, but I'm glad to try and do some.
Calorow?
Calorow? Commissioner Talariqo? Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone?
Yes.
Mayor Perry?
Yes.
Item D, a resolution of the City of Margate, Florida awarding request for proposal RFP number 2014-001, supply and install canal bank erosion tubing for the Department of Public Works to erosion barrier install, excuse me, installation corporation, ask for the itemized contract pricing, providing for initial contract term of three years with options to renew for an additional two one-year terms, providing for availability of funding.
What's the wish of the commission?
It's all move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Can you push a button, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosado?
Yeah, I said. I'm all for the canal cleanups and all that. I'm just wondering, how do we determine, like, what areas? I know, I know we already have them predetermined, but now for this contract, how do we determine which areas get done?
City Manager?
Public Works Director can respond to that issue.
Sam Lake, Public Works Director, City of Margate. Right now, this, this project or the bid is for, in the event we have an emergency, so this is for anything that comes up in the future. Right now, we don't have a program in place to be, to be doing now, to not make stabilization. This is just for the event we have something come up like a hurricane or something like that, so we'll have a contract in place because we have to have our contracts in place.
I think Sam, what he was asking whether or not, how do you select locations throughout the community that need this done, recognizing that we will never, we don't have sufficient funds to do the entire city? How do you recognize places? Is it based upon a critical need? Do you want those first, or how do you identify those?
Well, the ones that we've used right now, like the last project system that we did, that was with the Natural Resource Conservation Service. They went around and they determined where we're going to use our process. The process, we have this process here, the canal bank stabilization process, you have to have certain criteria. You have to have sufficient sediment in the canal and you have to have a littoral shelter. If those requirements aren't met, then we would have to go with another process such as the riprap rubble.
do at this time. You've got to move forward. We can't be always going backwards. And these people who are applying for these benefits deserve these benefits, plenty of them, that's all.
Commissioner Rosado?
Take it easy. It's a, if it's the right thing to do, let's follow the state. They're not telling us to do it, so why are we jumping the gun? If it's the right thing to do, then why don't the state recognize it?
Well, because the state will never, the state will be the last state in the United States to ever recognize anything that has to do with, with, recognized by the school board. I have a list here, if you'd like to see it, of the cities that in Florida, only in Florida, that do handle, I'm sorry, that do recognize registered domestic partners. The breakdown for this, just for information, is approximately five gay couples, people, and 10 non-married heterosexual couples. All those registered domestic partners are recognized in the county, Broward County. Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Donahue?
This is an issue about people, not about lifestyle. This is an issue about what we do as a conscience, not about the rest of the world, as our city works, as an employer, it's, it's as an employer looking at its employees, and it's time to take a look at taking care of all the people who work for us.
Commissioner Rosado?
You know, I was going to say, marriage is a contract between two people. It's a contract. What are we teaching our kids? You can live together and get the benefits of this person? I don't think it's morally right. I think it's something, we aren't jumping the gun, and I think we just need to hold back on this. We don't even have actual numbers. We're given numbers that are estimated. Five years from now, this could be a $2 million dollar, what are you guys looking at? I'm thinking about our future, the future of Margate. We don't know where this is going. We're not told to do this. Let's hold back on it.
Commissioner Talari, do you?
I don't know if you guys know this, if you look at, we're looking at the Saudis because there aren't too many senior citizens out here, but you would be amazed if you took a poll as to how many senior citizens.
Have gay sex?
Excuse me, not funny, Mitch.
Mr. Polashio?
Stop.
Please.
Stop.
Please.
How many senior citizens are living together, okay, couples, man and woman, okay, not married because they lose their social security back? And it happened. If you go in the condominium, you will find this all over the place, okay? And no one says anything about that, okay? It could be your grandparents, for God's sake, or your kid's grandparents, just don't, excuse me, don't, Jeff, can I rob you? I'm sorry.
Mr. Rosado?
My God. Whether they're single or not, they do it, okay? That's all I'm saying. And just, it's, it's, it's the thing that they do, I mean, you can't help that. I don't want to see people in social security losing their benefits because they decide two couples or widows that want to live together, that are senior citizens, have to give up all of their benefits because of that.
A registered domestic partnership is a legal document.
That's bullshit, Mike. That's bullshit, Mike.
Okay, all right, hold it, hold it. We're not doing this. We're going to do this calmly, we're going to do this respectfully, Mitch, come on. Okay. A registered domestic partnership is a contract between two people. Do you know what some of the benefits that you get with a registered domestic partnership? You get the ability to go to the hospital with the person that you care about. You get the ability to be able to open bank accounts without getting a bunch of crap, excuse me for lack of a better word. It's a commitment between two people, and straight, gay, doesn't matter. It's a commitment. It's the same commitment as a marriage, not religious wise, but it is a written commitment. Commissioner Rosado?
Frank, I just want to say, you're talking about condos and people that are retired. We're talking about this being a Margate employee deal, not the people that are retired. Whatever they want to do, that's fine. This is, this is taxpayers' money going to pay for this, when we have even, I mean, nobody's rushing up here saying, do this, do this. And another thing, how actually do we regulate this? If somebody's living in Margate, working in Margate, and says to their friend, hey, you know what, come live with me, put your name on my cable bill, and I'll split my insurance with you? I mean, how, where does this end? We're never going to know, and we're going to just get a, you know, a major bill, when this is all said and done.
And there's not any people that have just gotten married for a matter of convenience, for the, you know, for the, for the benefits, or the green cards, or any of those things either, right? Excuse me, excuse me. There are a number of people who have been married in the past, who will never get married again, due to their particular bad taste for marriage, who are registered domestic partners. They don't want to do the marriage thing. There is an option for them, that is a registered domestic partner. This is about treating the Margate city employees equally. The Margate residents aren't going to be coming up here. It is not their job or responsibility to tell, I'm sorry.
Tell.
It is not their responsibility to tell the city how to deal with their employees. What?
What?
What? Excuse me, excuse me. Y'all are going to get your time.
Okay.
This is a policy set by the city. Does it, y'all understand that, correct? If you go to another city or another government entity, you go and you try to tell the school board how to deal with their employees, you are not going to even get the three minutes that we're going to give you tonight. Commissioner Rosado?
A long time, and it's the right thing to do right now.
A long time.
Commissioner Rosano.
A lot of other cities, other cities throughout the United States have been doing this, treating their employees equally. It's real simple. Pretty much you get equal benefits under the law, and it's the right thing to do at this time. You gotta move forward. We can't be always going backwards. And these people who are applying for these benefits deserve these benefits, plain and simple. That's all.
Commissioner Rosano.
Take it easy. It's a... If it's the right thing to do, let's follow the state. They're not telling us to do it, so why are we jumping the gun? If it's the right thing to do, then why don't the state recognize it?
Well, because the state will never... The state will be the last state in the United States to ever recognize anything that has to do with... recognized by the school board. I have a list here, if you'd like to see it, of the cities that, in Florida, only in Florida, that do handle... I'm sorry, that do recognize registered domestic partners. The breakdown for this, just for information, is approximately five gay couples, people, and ten non-married heterosexual couples. All those registered domestic partners are recognized in the county, Broward County. Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Don.
This is an issue about people, not about lifestyle. This is an issue about what we do as a conscience, not about the rest of the world, as our city works, as an employer, it's as an employer looking at its employees. And it's time to take a look at taking care of all the people who work for us.
Commissioner Rosano.
Now, I gotta say, marriage is a contract between two people. It's a contract. What are we teaching our kids? You can live together and get the benefits of this person? I don't think it's morally right. I think it's something... We aren't jumping the gun, and I think we just need to hold back on this. We don't even have actual numbers. We're given numbers that are estimated. Five years from now, this could be a $2 million dollar... What are you guys looking at? I'm thinking about our future, the future of Margate. We don't know where this is going. We're not told to do this. Let's hold back on it.
Commissioner Teller, go.
I don't know if you guys know this, but if you look at... We're looking at the Saudis because there aren't too many senior citizens out here. But you would be amazed if you took a poll as to how many senior citizens...
Have gay sex?
Excuse me. Not funny, Mitch.
Mr. Poyceau.
Stop. Stop.
Please.
How many senior citizens are living together, okay, couples, man and woman, okay, not married because they lose their social security benefits? And it happened. If you go in the condominium, you will find this all over the place, okay? And no one says anything about that, okay? It could be your grandparents, for God's sake, or your kid's grandparents. Just don't... Excuse me. Don't... Do you have that problem? I'm sorry.
Mr. Sana.
My God. Whether they're single or not, they do it, okay? That's all I'm saying. It's the thing that they do. I mean, you can't help that. I don't want to see people in social security losing their benefits because they decide two couples are widowed and wanna live together, that are senior citizens, that have to give up all of their benefits because of that.
A registered domestic partnership is a legal document.
That's bullshit, Frank.
That's bullshit, Frank.
Okay, all right, hold it, hold it. We're not doing this. We're gonna do this calmly. We're gonna do this respectfully, Mitch. Come on. Okay. A registered domestic partnership is a contract between two people. Do you know what some of the benefits that you get with a registered domestic partnership? You get the ability to go to the hospital with the person that you care about. You get the ability to be able to open bank accounts without getting a bunch of crap, excuse me for lack of a better word. It's a commitment between two people, and straight, gay, doesn't matter. It's a commitment. It's the same commitment as a marriage, not religious wise, but it is a written commitment. Commissioner Rosano.
Frank, I just wanna say, you're talking about condos and people that are retired. We're talking about this being a Margate employee deal, not the people that are retired. Whatever they wanna do, that's fine. This is... This is taxpayers' money going to pay for this, when we haven't even... I mean, nobody's rushing up here saying, "Do this, do this." And another thing, how actually do we regulate this? If somebody's living in Margate, working in Margate, and says to their friend, "Hey, you know what? Come live with me. Put your name on my cable bill. I'll split my insurance with you," I mean, where does this end? We're never gonna know, and we're gonna just get a, you know, a major bill when this is all said and done.
And there's not any people that have just gotten married for a matter of convenience for the, you know, for the benefits or the green cards or any of those things either, right? Uh, excuse me, excuse me. Uh, there are a number of people who have been married in the past, who will never get married again due to their particular bad taste for marriage, who are registered domestic partners. They don't wanna do the marriage thing. There is an option for them. That is a registered domestic partner. This is about treating the Margate city employees equally. The Margate residents aren't gonna be coming up here. It is not their job or responsibility to tell... I'm sorry.
Tell.
What? It is not their responsibility to tell the city how to deal with their employees. What?
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 What are you...
Excuse me, excuse me. Y'all are gonna get your time. This is a policy set by the city. Does it... Y'all understand that, correct? If you go to another city or another government entity, you go and you try to tell the school board how to deal with their employees, you are not going to even get the three minutes that we're gonna give you tonight. Commissioner Rosano.
Frank, I'd like to ask you, Brian, Joanne, Lee, how many employees from the city of Margate came up to you and wanted this? I never had one.
I can't imagine one.
How many have you guys had?
Commissioner Rosano.
No, I'm just... Answer the question.
I'm just asking.
Mitch, Mitch.
Oh, my. Kick me out? Throw me out, Frank?
I'm not, I'm not.
You know what?
It is too important a conversation, Mitch, for you to play this.
Oh, freaking hell, cop, here come the cops.
It is too important a conversation to have that.
Oh, please, come on.
You don't wanna have a conversation, then, fine.
Hey, listen, everybody knows... Jesus Christ, holy... Oh, Jesus Christ, won't that shit...
Okay, Commissioner Rosano, you were speaking.
I just wanna finish what I was saying. What you were saying was that this is for the employees. They want this. I never had one employee come up to me, mention it to me. So, is this more of a policy platform, or is this more of a policy for the employees?
It is treating the city employees equally. It's not rocket science. It's treating every employee that we have in this city equally. Do they have to come up and ask for it? Because... Do they have to come up and ask for it? Is that the criteria?
I don't see people rushing up. We don't know where this is gonna go, how much it's gonna cost.
Where it's gonna go? I don't understand where it's gonna go.
How much is this gonna cost next year?
It... We don't know. We don't know how many... Wait, we don't know how many new married people we may be hiring next year either, do we? Can you say that?
No.
Well, you don't know what that's gonna cost, Mitch.
Support to Van Hapens.
You don't know what that's gonna cost, do you? If we hire five married, traditionally married people, at $10,000 apiece, correct, that's approximately what it is now?
Approximately.
That's a single cover.
Okay, for the single... Okay. It's gonna cost, you know, $50,000. Where's it gonna go? You know, personally, I think this city has really, really good benefits for its employees. There's not a lot of places that have as good of benefits, that pay for their partners, their married partners, and their families. A lot of places, they pay for the employee, and the employee has to pay for their family plan out of their own pocket. The city is not like that. This city is not like that. Commissioner Rosano.
We're getting back to the employees. This is taxpayer money. Our city needs help, but yet we're gonna go fund this, where we don't know what it's gonna cost, at what expense, and let everything else go to the side. I just don't understand. We're supposed to be here representing the people. Nobody's once mentioned it to me. We'll find out tonight. Maybe everybody's gonna come up and say, "Yes, it's a great idea." I don't know. I didn't have anybody come up to me. Everybody I spoke to, nobody was in favor of it. So, we'll see tonight. And that's why I'm gonna leave my coat on.
Commissioner Don.
Yes, we're supposed to be representing all of the people in the city. I didn't talk to everybody who was for or against. I take a look at this. Nobody came running up to me saying, "Do or don't do," but I take a look at our diversity. I take a look at this nation. I take a look at the rules and how we treat each other. And I don't want to exclude anybody from being able to have the benefits that some have compared to others because we don't want to.
Okay. Now, before we get to public discussion, I'm gonna make a small statement. This domestic partnership benefit does not, in any way, shape, or form, benefit me personally. I do not take the city's health insurance. I do not believe commissioners should get the city's health insurance. I plan on trying to fix that someday. However, however, I believe that we should treat all of our employees equally. We should not be saying, "You're more important than you. Your family's more important than yours," because we don't have the same legal standing as you do. If you want to have a registered domestic partner, it is not for me to tell you that, but I certainly would like you to have the opportunity to take care of your family the same as anyone else has, public.
Frank Sana, 7310, First Street, Department 206, Margate, Florida. Couple things that I think you got before you consider going through with this. Number one, I was looking over the requirements that are in the backup agenda, the backup to the agenda, and it said that if you were a domestic partner for one year, then in that course of that time, you are allowed to sign up and become a domestic partner and get on the city benefits. How many... My mother's not here. I lived with a lot of girls in my lifetime for more than a year at a time, before I was married and after I... Well, before I married, after my wife. But if every time I lived with some girl, I signed her up, and I'm gonna use this on the... I'm not going against the gay lesbian on the other side. If every time I did it, I signed my girlfriend up who lived with me for that program, you seem to be spending a lot of money. My biggest question, my biggest problem with this is, is the requirements that we have. One-year requirement of living together is way too soon. If you wanna... I think you guys should go back, put this back into committee, and you should make some better timeframes. For example, I know of a lot of gay and straight relationships that break up after a couple of years. You know, why should we pay the benefits? Why should my tax dollars go to pay those benefits for the time that they're there, but then they go live with somebody else, or then they go with somebody else? So, if you did something like a five-year plan or something, if they lived together for five years, or if they were married, that would give them the ability to apply for the domestic, to the domestic partnership. I wouldn't have a problem with that if there was a reasonable amount of time. One year is not a reasonable amount of time. Number two, I wanna touch on what Frank said. Frank, you are a commissioner in the city of Margate. You are representing... You're the guys in... I'll give all these to you. You guys are making the laws. How dare you say it's okay for someone to do something illegally, taking my tax dollars from social security and the federal benefits that they get, and say, "Oh, that doesn't matter. They can do that"? No, it's illegal. You guys shouldn't be saying it's okay to do it. Now, I'm not saying that it's your job to enforce it, but we shouldn't be sitting there as commissioners saying, "Oh, it's okay that, you know, they do it. We should go with this thing because they do it illegally anyway." No, if someone's doing something illegally, we shouldn't be basing laws. We should be making laws based on what's illegal. We should be making laws based on what's legally. Just one question. Is there any difference between, let's say, you hire a person that's a street sweeper, and he's married, okay? What is that person, and he's married, what does that person's benefits get? And then, if you hire someone who is a domestic partner, is the benefits any different? Is it dollars and cents the same?
None.
Is that basically it?
Exactly the same.
Okay, I'm... I think Vice Mayor has a good idea. You should table it, go back and write it properly, make, take into consideration that a partnership for one year is not a legitimate partnership. It's a... It's a relationship that's gonna fail.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm just saying. Just go back, readjust it, and do it.
I'm gonna turn it over to you in one second. I just have one small statement on that. I'm gonna ask the city manager, and you can answer my questions, so you can answer. City manager, when you hire a married couple, do you make them wait a year?
No.
Thank you. Okay, city manager.
The only comment I was... I'll let you sit down, sir. The only comment I was gonna make is that this policy was modeled after other policies that are in place across the state of Florida. It's a model policy. It is one where the city itself will police the issue. There are a number of criteria that must be met if you were to qualify for a domestic partnership. It's not just one or two things, or one thing that the gentleman mentioned. There are a number of things that have to be met, and to ensure that it is truly a domestic partnership. And I just wanna make it perfectly clear. It's a model policy, and it's even somewhat stronger than some other policies across the state of Florida. Just as a point of information.
Go ahead.
Anthony Cagell, 7856, Northwest First Street, Margate, Florida. In reading the legislation text from city manager Jerry Blau, it says, "As employee benefits are bargained for, by the collective bargaining units, this policy will require to be bargained with each union if requested." Has any one of these unions requested this?
I don't know if you're reading. Are you asking me that question?
Yes, I'm asking you this question. I ask everybody.
No, this issue has not come up at the bargaining table.
Okay. And if it has not come up, then who brought this up that's come to the table at this time?
I did, three years ago.
Okay. This is not a question of who is more important than who. This is a question of dollars and cents, all right? You talked about how... I'm gonna stick with the ten people that are the heterosexual couple, who are living together. My son's living with his girlfriend. I don't expect his job to give his girlfriend benefits. I got married, and my wife got her benefits to do my marriage, all right? And you can get married in the civil union at City Hall. You don't have to have any religion. It has nothing to do with religion. It should have to do with dollars and cents. And I agree with Commissioner Simone that we should go back to the table and work on this again, all right? Because the numbers that you're giving in your paperwork here is an estimate, which means that estimate could be higher. Because how many single people are there actually working for the city right now? How many people who are single are working for the city? Well, you think right now, there are only ten of the single people in the city may go for this. Well, there's twenty, thirty, forty single people in the city, but they don't make off for it. And as Mr. Sana was saying, with a one-year commitment, that's not much of a commitment. I've lived with girls for a year, one that broke up quite easily, and now all of a sudden the city is...
Living in sin.
Well, they may be living in sin, but that was a choice, and I wasn't asking the city, well, my job, to pay any benefits for them, all right? Now, I wanted to get benefits for my wife. I got married, all right? And I did it in a civil situation. And what you're looking to do with our money is to give people money, health insurance, $10,000 each one. I believe it's $10,658. I don't think that's an insignificant amount of money for someone who's been living with somebody for a year. And now let's go for the other five. I have some...
You're out of time.
I'm out of time? Well, my point is not...
Okay. And just for the record, again, the word you're all missing, or you're missing, is registered domestic partners. This is not just shacking up with somebody. It is registered domestic partners, and to be a registered domestic partner, you have to jump through some hoops. Go ahead.
Rick Riccardi, 4829 South Hemingway Circle. I... There was no comment necessarily from the city manager or the people who were involved with this. I just wondered, is there an underlying desire to have this from the city, other than the commissioner bringing it up? Does the city manager and department heads feel this is a good policy? Is there some kind of consensus to that?
If you want me to respond to that, it is not the purpose of the city manager nor the staff to draft policy. The city commission acts as the policymakers for the city. If they feel it's appropriate, then it's appropriate, and we would implement it. The city staff and my office was asked to look at this issue and to prepare correspondence and support. We're not in support, basically, of the facts out there for this issue. That's what we did. The numbers that were gathered on this issue were garnered from our healthcare broker, who are experts in the field, who have dealt with this in other communities as well. They provide a percentage, what they believe is representative of the number of employees that we have to work here on a full-time basis. That's where those numbers came from. So, it's not up to city staff. It's not up to me. It makes no difference what I think about this issue. This is a policy decision for the city commission, not city staff or the city manager's office.
Okay. I just wondered if you had input in that?
There was a lot of work that went into it on, for me, from the staff?
You need to understand that the numbers that were provided were based upon experience that healthcare providers are familiar with from other cities across the state of Florida who have implemented this particular type of a policy.
Well, after hearing what you were all talking about, the idea that you have to be registered, you know, I mean, I know married people that get divorced in two weeks. I mean, I don't think that's a relevant comparison personally, and I think once you have to register, it's a little different than getting a license to get married. So, I see that as the same deal. And why somebody who's registered to get married doesn't have the ability to have a partner covered by insurance doesn't make sense to me. So, I would very much think that the city would want to attract good people, whether they are registered partners or married people is irrelevant. I think all benefits should be equal, so I mean, it makes a lot of sense for me to have a yes for that.
If I could just say one other thing about this, is this... They have to swear to documentation and affidavits attached to this, where if they falsify that information, they could in fact be terminated from employment. So, recognize, regardless of what anybody thinks about the policy or the process, it's a model policy, and it would be readily accepted, I believe. And if you look at all the policies we looked at across the state, that's where they are. We took the best of the best and tried to put it together.
If they split up, did they lose the benefits?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And if they split up, they cannot, for example, for another domestic partner, a year must pass before they could reapply for the domestic partnership.
Indicrista Trail, 6600 Randy Wood Drive South, Margate. I took a look at this backup, and personally, I feel, in my opinion, the criteria is a little vague and a little lenient. It would be very easy for misuse of this potential policy and the city be taken advantage of. The second point that I have, and again, this is in my opinion, this should not even be on the agenda for the city commission. This should be brought to the citizens of Margate and see what they want. It should be put on the referendum in November for a full vote of the residents, not be decided by the city commission, because the citizens are the ones paying this additional benefit. They should be the ones to decide this.
Thank you. And again, I'm not sure how you put the minority rights in a referendum. I would, however, say, if we are going to put that on a referendum, then we just cut the whole thing and put every bit of city benefits on a referendum, because there should be no reason why we should not be voting on what a married couple can get, what a single person can get, straight across the board. Let's put it out there on a referendum and let the people decide what your police, fire, and employees are gonna get.
Sounds like a good idea.
Go ahead. I go... I listen, you really, seriously, I'm gonna suck you out, but...
Michael Cerchew, 1611 Northwest Fourth Street. I come to these meetings, and I usually sit down back, and I don't really talk, and I listen to people. And sitting here and listening to this, it sounds like it's an issue of equality. Like you said, city manager, there are these different criterias, that you can't just, like, say, "This is my friend. We're together for a year." No, they're different things. And it does sound like all the objections, money, and all those other things. That isn't an issue for a straight person in a married relationship. It's an issue for people who are together and are not, are together for a while and are not, say, registered as married people. And I like to say, it's the issue of morality. I think this is a moral issue, but this is a moral issue towards the future, that this is what we want. We want equality. We want different people with different lifestyles. You know, you were talking about ethnicity. I represent that ethnicity in this city. I represent difference. And this is an issue of accepting difference. And I fully, 100%, support this, because it is a support of someone living a different lifestyle, and that is the issue. All the stuff about money does not apply for a straight person. This applies for all the different people who are minorities, who everyone comes up here and says they're not represented. This is an issue of trying to represent those minorities, and I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bertha Smith, 569 Benjaro, Margate. I think this resolution should be passed. I think this is a matter of human rights and equal rights, and I don't think that Margate should be discriminated against any of its employees. Every employee deserves to be treated equal.
Thank you. You were better.
Rich Alley, resident of Margate, 7631 Northwest 23rd Street. All the comments, I try to wait till everybody's finished before I get up there and stick my two cents into this issue. It's a big deal. It's a sensitive thing that we're talking about. You know, I don't wanna say the wrong thing, because you could get hammered at it big time, because it's a matter of people, and I understand what you're saying. I don't totally agree with this process, the way they wrote it, with what I'm listening to, with the one year and all this. I think it should be tabled tonight, at least do that much, just to give it a chance to get loose, if I could use that word, loose to the people. We could look at it. And people that are listening to this at home are probably saying things that you won't wanna hear, because it's probably not the right thing to say. You know, we can't discriminate against any employee. I used to belong to a union. Our union people, we got everything across the board, and it was all benefits to everybody. Listening to the people, like I said before, listening to the people talk and... Listening to the people, like I said before, listening to the people talk and express their opinion, I would say we should table this. You know, and if it's in the paper, maybe it won't make a big deal, but if there is money factor involved in it, you know, it can grow as it goes along, uh, to a certain extent, if I could say that much about it. But, uh, I would say table it. You know, let, let it at least do that much, just this particular time. I mean, Vice Mayor's mom said that, and we clapped and we booed or whatever it is, but I think we should maybe table it. Let's get a little more used to what we're trying to get across to the public and the people and us sitting out here in this chambers tonight. Thank you.
Scott Yardley, five-nine Forte, Menful Boulevard. I see this as a very large conflict of interest. They opposed, uh- What's his name? DeGon? This guy right next to him. Nick Klein, they opposed Nick Klein. I always saw him up here exempting himself from voting, because it was a conflict of interest. I've heard you rail on him, Mr., uh, Madam Mayor, for his lack of ethics. You should not be voting on this, for if it's not direct to your conflict of interest, it is for your, it is for your political and moral bias, conflict of interest. We have had discussions about this years back. This should go before the citizens for a vote, because it would benefit potentially every commissioner, and you're voting yourself in benefits. We did not bring you up here to have your benefits. We brought you here to represent us. Let me finish, because I have my time. All right. It should go before the citizens, but, uh, Ms. Pearman has gone on the record to say that the public has no right to choose how the city treats. They have no rights to choose how they're treated. It's elitism. All right, you're out of order. You're out of order, and you're abusing your authority. We represent, this is a representation of your abuse of authority.
That's not what she said.
You're out of order.
God!
All right. Ms. Pearman, you will use that statement. That's right, then take a comeback in there, right? It's hypocrisy. When it works for you, you speak up. When it benefits you, when you want to benefit you on inclusion and the moral minority rights or issue equality, when it benefits you, you speak up. But when it doesn't benefit you, when minorities in South Margate would benefit from having their own district, you use inertia of time and ignore it. It is contradictory, it is hypocrisy.
But let's stay, Bert, let's stay, let's stay, Bert.
You say it's for the, for the, the, um, employees, they didn't ask for it. All right? You censor Rosano for giving advantage to the unions. You attempt to censor Rosano for giving advantage to unions, and here you are giving, uh, given benefits to them, which they didn't even ask for. Which they didn't even ask for. And you say that it's not for personal reasons. It reeks of contradiction. It reeks of contradiction, and this is your personal agenda being pushed in the city. The state has voted on their, on their feelings on this. It is not your own elitism of your own mentality, that you think that you're smarter or better than the people. You were voted in by the people, and therefore the people should choose on this, because it benefits you directly.
You're done. You're done. Your time's up. I will answer a couple of things, as I made the disclaimer beforehand. I do not take the benefits from the city. I do not believe that commissioners should get the benefits-
But you give yourself the rights.
In the city. It is, if you want to say it's a personal agenda, treating people equal and respectfully is a personal agenda.
That's interpretive of what is, what is, what is right and equal. Everyone has a right to get married.
Mr. Yardley. No, everyone does not.
Yes, they do.
Mr. Yardley. If, if treating people equal and trying to be respectful to the employees of our city is a personal agenda, I will own that, I will take that. I will always take trying to treat people equally and stand up for that. I'm not even gonna go with your, we don't go to the south side of town, I spend a hell of a lot of time on the south side of the town. You have no idea.
I didn't say you didn't go there.
We represent all of the city of Margate.
Rich Popovich, six-oh-six-six Woodfield Boulevard. Reason why Ms. Pearman's not taking any from the city, she's already getting it from the school board. She don't have to take it from the city. Right? So that's how it works, huh? So actually, like Forrest Gump, like saying, you're not taking it from the city, you're already getting it from the government. So let's speech for full about it, and you're probably working for the school board and probably getting the benefit to your trying to impose upon us, because the school is probably as goofy as everybody else wants to be about this. But I'm gonna tell you right now, that I think morality is at the issue of this. I don't care about the money. I just don't want to pay for two people, safe sex, having sex. And I don't want to pay for somebody shacking up and, uh, not being responsible. See, what this basically really, really is, and you do, this happens at, at this local level. A lot of you people don't get it, because you want to sit around and say, oh, it's happening someplace else and it's wonderful. One thing that I learned a long time ago is that when anybody's engaging in some nefarious activity, the first thing I want to tell you is that everybody's engaging in it, but everybody's not. The truth of the matter is, this is an immoral thing, it's a morality thing. This is a chip away at marriage. That's what this is. This is another chip away at a local level, that's being pushed across the country for indecency and perverted living, and, you know, not being responsible in your personal relationship. That's all this is, it's hoping it happened right here in front of us at the local level. And that's all it is. And I, I find it seriously disheartening, to find people that have so much disrespect for the institution of marriage and what it actually means, because that's what this is. There's no morality in this, and that's what I'm talking about, I don't even care about the money. We're just promoting morality.
I think we should end with that, because words couldn't have been said better set, but you want to say something, Jack, because-
Briefly. Very briefly. I won't even take one of my-
You're in for a break, Mike.
My name is Jack Schifral, I'm the president de veritas of the Margate Democratic Club. I'm also the area leader for the Democratic Party for Margate and Golden Creek. Very simple. Commissioner Rosano, and the rest of the commission, the mayor. If you truly believe, as the basic tenet and foundation of this country says, that we are all created equal, that we are all endowed by our Creator with certain inalienable rights, you don't make an exception for people who think a little different than you do, who live a little different lifestyle than you do, who choose to act in a different way than you do. One of the hardest things for elected officials to do, and I understand, because I was an elected official at one time, is to vote for something that goes against their personal brain, that they might personally disagree with. But again, if you believe that we are all created equal, you don't make exceptions for something that you don't like. It's just a wrong way to go. And Commissioner Simone, now that the table motion has not passed, I hope that you will vote for this motion, and join your three other colleagues. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosano.
I just want to say, I'm not up here to make my own personal decisions, everybody out there knows that. I was ever elected by the people to watch out for the people. I'm watching out for the people from what I've been hearing. So I'm not, it's not a personal thing here. Take it the way you want.
Okay, but are you coming up or no? Aw, come on. I really wanted to leave off with Mr. Popovich. I just wanted that.
Tim Ross, twenty-seven, twenty-seven North Andrews Avenue, Oak Manners. To answer Commissioner Rosano's question, the BSO currently has two-point-five percent of their employees who have opted for this benefit. I would ask the city manager, how many employees does the city have?
Approximately four-hundred eighty full-time employees.
Okay, so you're looking at ten employees, ten to twelve and a half. So that's your cost estimate, sir. Thank you.
Call the law, let's do this. You or die.
Commissioner Talavito.
Hi.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
No.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Before I give my answer, I'd like to, um, make a comment. It's not up to me to tell somebody how to live their life or what to do with their life. I do believe you should have the right to take care of those you love. I do know that there are other ways for people to be covered for hospital, hospital and medical benefits, other than this. Trying to be fiscally responsible, and to me, that's what this is, trying to be fiscally responsible, I think that the way the city does her health insurance benefits right now needs an overhaul. And because I feel that it needs an overhaul, I would like to see, as I said it before, that this overhaul will be done before this decision is made. And because of that feeling, I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Mayor Pearman.
Yes. Next.
Oh, phone number seven. Eight. An ordinance of the city of Florida authorizing and directing a referendum to be implemented by the administration for the election of November fourth, two thousand fourteen, establishing the subject of the referendum to be as follows, charter amendment for gender neutrality, capitalization, deletion of obsolete language, current technology format, providing for appeal, providing for separability, providing for pacification, providing effective data.
What's the wish of the commission? Discussion, Commissioner Rosano.
Yeah, like, um, before we start voting on these, I know that there was something brought up by the charter review about a twenty-five thousand dollar cap by the city manager, and it wanted to be raised, and I didn't see it anywhere in here, is that something that is-
I think we took that amount completely off and, and decided to do it by ordinance instead.
By ordinance.
We could choose it by ordinance.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
Just what information? Is this going on the agenda? Is this going on the ballot?
Yes, this is what the charter review board recommended, this is what's going on. It's been squished a little bit, so that it gets easier. Okay. All right, uh, anything else on that? Public?
So, uh, what do I do? Get the covers on A, B, C, D, E?
Yep.
Four?
No, when each one's red.
Okay, so which one are we doing now?
A.
A? Okay, A, very good. And, uh, it says, an ordinance with the referendum for gender neutrality. What the hell is gender neutrality? Are we growing beefless people and they're tested like chicken now?
The charter is completely written as in he and him, they've changed that to he, she, him, her.
Him, her, or he, she?
That's okay.
He, she, how about you?
Okay, yes. Call the law, please.
Commissioner Talavito. Commissioner Donahue. Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
B, an ordinance of the city of Margate, Florida, authorizing and directing a referendum to be implemented by the administration for the election of November fourth, two thousand fourteen, establishing the subject of the referendum to be as follows, charter amendment for city manager Broward County Supervisor of Elections, and designating acting city manager, providing for appeal, providing for separability, providing for pacification, providing effective data.
What's the wish of the commission?
So vote.
Second. Discussion. Public.
Yeah, I was, I was honestly, Rick, can I offer a question? Are we, are we setting up designation as to the position of the Broward County Supervisor of Elections?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it would become clear if you read the, on the first page of the ballot issue. I'll read it to you, and it should be explanatory. Shall the charter of the city of Margate be amended for advertising procedures for city ordinance, clarifying manager as city manager, clarifying supervisor of elections as Broward supervisor? Allowing the city manager to designate by letter filed with the city clerk distributed to the city commission, a qualified city employee as acting city manager in his temporary absence. So this is how-
Just clarify, Rick, I can't-
Forward.
Yeah, Rich Popovich, six-oh-six-six Woodfield Boulevard. I mean, there are so many things to put on this charter review thing, and we got something as stupid as this? I mean, this is it? Give me a break, man, I mean, and going at house cleaning? What the hell's that? House cleaning? Housekeeping, house cleaning? He comes up with these idiot statements all the time, saying we're, we're house cleaning and whatever. How come this was never put up and put up forward if we had a house clean before? How come this was never put up as a reference or put on the charter of our house clean it, or had it be done? And then that's the whole thing, this thing, this whole, this whole thing, I'm looking at it, this stuff, this is gobbledygook. I mean, I go get loose out on this board and, and really, this board was started because of me busting everybody's chops for centuries to even get it. But I didn't want to sue it, because I didn't want to politicize it, but, and it, there's nothing here, and this? Really?
It's on the ballot because of the charter has not been gone through for, how many years has it been? Eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five?
Eighty-three.
Since nineteen eighty-three, and a number of the things on the ballot on, in the, in the charter had to be cleaned up to be made more understood. Go ahead.
City King, two-one-one-one, over, statistic, thank you. Okay. In, in, replying to just clear up some things about the charter. I was a member of the charter review board, and we spent six long months going through pages. We had terrific, uh, advice from Eugene, our lawyer. There was in it some items that were long, long overdue, that did not come up to the standards of today, and that we had to change, like he, him, it, it said, it was always the man name which today does not fly. A lot of them, but we do, had, we were charged to make it right and bring it up to, uh, the twenty-first century. We spent six months, and some of which seems very trivial, but a lot of it, and Eugene, we thank you very much for your help, it had to be lawful, it had to be sensible, and it's got to go on a ballot. So really, most of these things have been going over and kicked about and kicked about, and I think you'll find that if you look really, some of the things are, are not really nitpicking. It shouldn't be. It's just that we've brought it to the 21st century. So, I hope that clears up some of those things on, to go on the ballot. And thank you.
Joyce Bryan, 7005 Northwest 17th Street. As chair for the Charter Review Committee, I just want to say that the archaic language and the obsolete language that we were trying to bring to our charter so that people could clearly and easily more understand it, that's basically why some of this language was changed. In order to do that, when you look at something that has not been cleaned up for 30 years, it makes a big difference if you can bring into it modern language the old- oops, Sid. Excuse me?
Yes, up here.
Bringing it to a modern language so that you could more clearly understand it. And that was the purpose of, one of the main things we tried to do.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait.
You don't have the gavel.
Good laughs. It's okay. We're adults. Okay. Come on, please.
Commissioner Talari Do.
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pearman.
Yes. C.
Item C, "An ordinance of the City of Margate, Florida authorizing and directing a referendum to be implemented by the administration for the election of November 4th, 2014, establishing the subject of the referendum to be as follows: Charter amendment for city departments, director offices, agency and boards, contracts, purchases, and bid awards, providing for appeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing an effective date."
What's the wish of the commission?
So moved, your word.
Second. Uh, sorry, discussion. Public.
Rich Popovich, 6066 Woodfield Boulevard. I have to say that I've read the charter many times, and it was in English. I was able to understand it, so I don't know where all this rewriting it in something that everybody can understand is kind of means something. It was in English when I read it. Very simple, not complicated. I don't see anything, one of these things here that had anybody discussed, the charter review stuff. I don't see anything here. They talked about term limits, salary ranges for commissioners, something else. I don't see any of this here. What the hell is this? Are people, is this a joke? For real?
What we had before us, what was voted on as a majority, wasn't it a supermajority, I believe, vote from the Charter Review Board, we had a workshop on it, we discussed it. What's going on the ballot is pretty much everything that they brought before us after six months' worth of discussions. Come on.
Commissioner Talari Do.
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pearman.
Yes.
D.
"An ordinance of the City of Margate, Florida authorizing and directing a referendum to be implemented by the administration for the election of November 4th, 2014, establishing the subject of the referendum to be as follows: Charter amendment for qualifications, election of commissioners, oath in election of mayor and vice mayor, providing for appeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing an effective date."
What's the wish of the commission?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Public. Do you want this one?
Rich Popovich, 6066 Woodfield Boulevard. I have to say that I don't even know what the hell this is for. What is this for?
I can tell you. It changes it from six months to one year for residency? Um...
Who is that?
Pardon me?
Who is that?
The Charter Review Board.
Let me tell you, I mean, these people should have been fired a long ago. This is the junk they bring up. This is like total junk.
Was the recommendation straightforward?
Oh, my God. This is even worse than before. And even some of those things that were discussed, they didn't even bring forward. See, this is why I was afraid. And as a matter of fact, I think most of these things were written by the attorney. This sounds like attorney, attorney gobbledygook. Because I know who runs these meetings and how it goes. I think this is just not a junk that came from the Steinfield. I really do.
The meetings were open for public, the Charter Review Board begged the residents-
You don't listen to public.
Pardon me?
You don't listen to public, remember?
I was not the Charter Review Board. And the Charter Review Board begged the residents to come. They put it out there in the flyers, and they wanted to hear what the residents had to say.
They shut up.
They really shut up. So, come on.
You know, if Mr. Popovich would just read the backup.
Mr. Jane?
I'd like to read what the ballot issue was going to say. It's a lot more descriptive than the title. Shall the Charter of the City of Margate be amended to provide for one-year residency qualification to run for commissioner? An amended oath of office for commissioners? No election for a seat where there is only one duly qualified candidate? A drawing of lots to decide election where there is a tie vote for election to a seat? And for choosing of mayor and vice mayor in the month of November or soon thereafter? Just want to put that on the record. So, the gobbledygook, okay, is plain and it's clear, and it will be on the ballot.
Come on.
Commissioner Talari Do.
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pearman.
Yes.
And Jane, when you read this one, read the whole thing so we can save some time.
Alright, I will. First, I'll read the title and then I'll make the question. "An ordinance of the City of Margate, Florida authorizing and directing a referendum to be implemented by the administration for the election of November 4th, 2014, establishing the subject of the referendum to be as follows: Charter amendment for less than full term, missing commission meetings, hearing for forfeiture of office, providing for appeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing an effective date." That's the title. Then, on the ballot, it will say, "Shall the Charter of Margate be amended to provide that service of less than a full term for term limited purposes, as a result of resignation, suspension, removal, or forfeiture, shall be considered as a full term? A commissioner shall not receive 1/24 of his or her salary for missing more than four regular scheduled commission meetings unless the meeting is missed for good cause. Amending procedure and grounds for forfeiture of office for a commissioner."
What's the wish of the commission?
Public.
Wait a minute. Madam Mayor?
Uh, wait a minute. We got a motion in order? Discussion. Public. We don't discriminate. We don't discriminate if you live in Margate.
Thank you very much. Notice Charles Sloan, I live in the- time to get your name for the record, sir.
Carl, Carl's Brings, Florida. And I noticed that, thank you, Madam Mayor, you recognize people from other areas, and some people didn't even mention where they lived. They utilized a political organization to address the fact that they were going to make a speech. The only question I have about this thing is there's an individual that's been out of office for quite a while. So, as far as that individual is concerned, I'll say it, it's a David McLean. How would this or would this affect him in any way whatsoever until a final decision is made as to whatever is in existence?
It doesn't. He's suspended by the governor of the state of Florida, so it's out of our control. If he is brought back, if the governor brings him back, all this does is clarify, and which I believe you were on the commission at the time when we were-
That's what I'm asking.
-a bit confusing about what a hearing was. This basically clarifies what a hearing is for a commissioner to be asked to leave office. And it clarifies that, that it's a hearing in front of the commission. They have due process. They're allowed an attorney and all that. It just clarifies where it was not clarified before.
Alright, thank you so kindly, Madam Mayor. And to all of you, thank you for tolerating the whole evening because it's been a long meeting. And I'm gonna go home and go to sleep after this, so.
Good. I'm going to work. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Longer than your meetings, where'd you go? Right? These are longer than your meetings.
Rich Popovich, 6066 Woodfield Boulevard. I have to say that the disappointment in what they're being passed, and you know what? I mean, I heard a lot more, a little giddy laughing out in the audience about this and all. One of the things though, I do know that happened at the Charter Review Board was the city attorney's salary range and job description was brought forth. Because, you know, you look at the charter. I mean, this guy has more jobs than anybody I know and gets paid all over the place. Giving us, you know, showing up on, you know, you might want to complain. And that's why this is all written like this. He wrote this. He wrote all this.
He did not vote up.
He wrote all this. This is all written by him. And most of this gobbledygook in there really doesn't warrant any of the things that we wanted to get done in the charter. And you know what? If the Charter Review Board, you know, it's my fault that the Charter Review Board was a failure. Well, that's what it was. And there isn't anything in there of any significance or any importance towards the citizens of Margate. Just junk.
Well, actually, this one particularly docks a commissioner if they miss more than four meetings. Instead of them getting a blanket walk through the park and calling in and not, if they miss four meetings, after four meetings, they get docked from their salary that the people pay. So, it does. And that's it. Okay. I'm not doing that. Yeah, I can use one. Uh, come on. Thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Talari Do.
Aye.
Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pearman.
Yes, and the last item has been pulled for money laundering. So, we are attorney.